Hi, my name is Susanna Karas and I'm the Director of Sustainability at Hillsborough Township. The Sustainability Department creates initiatives to engage and educate the public on maintaining a healthy planet environmentally, socially, and economically for future generations to thrive in.
My name is Sam and I'm the Office Administrator for the Hillsborough Sustainability Office. Our office also handles the township's yearly certification process through Sustainable Jersey, where we have been certified for our sustainability actions and initiatives since 2009. Hillsborough Township has been Certified Silver over six years straight. You can go to our website, sustainablehillsborough.com for more information. Our office is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Hello, my name is Shelley Capel and I'm the Office Administrator of the Engineering Department. I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce you to the Hillsborough Engineering Permit Applications that are located on the Hillsborough Township website under Engineering. First is the Engineering General Permit Application. This is for new structures such as garages and pole barns, first-floor additions, driveway expansions, and in-ground pools. The instructions and fees are listed on the application along with the grading example which is needed with the application. Second is the Road and Public Space Opening Permit Application. This is needed if you're expanding your driveway at the entrance by the roadway and any work that is done in the area from the curb and measuring back 10 feet, which is called the right-of-way. The last application I would like to discuss is the Soil Import Application. If you're regrading your property, you'll need to submit a grading sketch. And if you plan on importing soil from outside of Hillsborough, you're required to submit lab results indicating that the soil is not contaminated. This and all of our permits are for your protection. If you would like to discuss any of these permits or have any other inquiries, please feel free to contact the Hillsborough Township Engineering Department anytime at hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of December 8th, 2022. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised between Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for Inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of board members and board and township professionals, please?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Mr. Santa Maria is absent. Mr. Peason?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Merrill Ponti?
Here.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Here.
Chairman Sirocchi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Here.
I'm here, Mr. Hoyt?
Here.
Mr. Lombardozzi took ill late this afternoon, that is why he is not here. Mr. B. Allen is taking the video and the transcription will be made off that as well as the tape. And Mr. B. Allen is here.
Okay. Thank you. So we do not have consideration of meeting minutes, nor resolutions, there's no planning board business, and also no consideration of ordinances. So with that, I will be going to business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. So if there's anything not on this evening's agenda that you would like to address the board, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And also, just to make sure that we get everybody through, you don't have to wait till the current speaker to sit down to come up. We could line up against the wall. Thank you.
Do you need to speak into the mic, folks? Especially with the transcribing video and tape.
Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. Should Planning Board experts provide direct design support to an applicant? Should Planning Board experts answer a question from the Planning Board on behalf of an applicant? Should they dismiss concerns raised by the Planning Board stating that they don't see an issue with the topic? These are rhetorical questions. Clearly, the answers are no, no, and no. In fact, any of these could be construed as a direct breach of the experts' impartiality and by extension, the Planning Board's impartiality. At the November 10th Planning Board meeting during the hearing on the Western Road Proposal, it appeared that Mr. Hay, the Planning Board Engineer, did all three of these things. During that hearing, Mr. Neil Julian asked that the applicant consider a way to retain some of the stormwater runoff to help mitigate downstream flooding during a storm. After Mr. Ford responded, Mr. Hay chimed in expressing confidence that the applicant could meet this requirement. He went on to say, "I don't see a reason why we can't work with them to see what we can do to address that." He indicated that he and the applicant would prepare a, quote, "point-by-point response", that this collaboration would satisfy the Planning Board's request, and that Mr. Hay really doesn't have a concern about the additional stormwater volume. About three hours into the meeting, Mr. Chairman, you raise an issue to the applicant about using stormwater retention basin across the street owned and operated by the Hearthstone community. Mr. Hay initially agreed with Mr. Ford that they would not be using this basin. When pressed further, he admitted that the applicant would in fact be using the basin, but represented on behalf of the applicant that there would be an outlet control on the wet pond that would control the flow into the Hearthstone basin. Mr. Hay said, quote, "I don't believe that it is an issue," and repeated Mr. Ford's assertion that they are meeting the regulations. In fact, Mr. Hay went on to, quote, "remind the board that the application was fully meeting the requirements", implying that imposing additional protective measures was not appropriate. These are a few of the examples from that evening's meeting, and I have more in my written statement, but I don't have time to read it. There are others. He said that the applicant would certainly be, quote, "exonerated of any further requirements regarding the vernal habitat." Mr. Hay consistently demonstrated support for the application and the applicant's representatives, and twice referred to when the application would be approved. In no way did he express or demonstrate impartiality or concern for the public interest. Many members of the public who were first-time attendees of the Planning Board were convinced that Mr. Hay was employed by the applicant. Many of us knew better but had no opportunity whatsoever to object to the intercourse that was occurring. The public was left silenced and without representation while the Planning Board's expert praised the applicant and pledged support for their proposal. Meanwhile, the Planning Board members made no effort to redirect or rein in Mr. Hay's clearly inappropriate behavior. "We are not interested in maligning Mr. Hay's character or intentions. We ask that his actions from the November 10th meeting be addressed publicly by the Board. It would be essential to ensure, both in substance and appearance, that the Planning Board and its experts are impartial and in fact represent the community and the public's best interests. Even the appearance of impropriety by public officials is not acceptable. A public apology for Mr. Hay would be appropriate, as would either his replacement or his retraining on his proper role in conduct in these proceedings. We request that Mr. Julian re-review the concerns raised by the Environmental Commission with the applicant at the next hearing, but this time without interference from Mr. Hay. We expect that all points need to be fully addressed by the applicant rather than dismissed out of hand by the Board's expert. In addition, we urge a change to the Planning Board's meeting agenda in this specific circumstance that occurred on November 10th. If in a meeting the public has been given no opportunity to comment on the evening's proceedings, we suggest reserving the last 30 minutes of the hearing to provide that opportunity. The applicant testimony would be suspended and a brief comment period opened so that those who did make an effort to attend in person can be granted a voice. As it was, Mr. Ford testified for nearly three straight hours, casually dialoguing and even joking with the Planning Board and their experts, and leaving the public with no opportunity to speak, rebut, or even ask for clarification. Consider how that meeting would be experienced by a member of the public. Is this the image of the Planning Board you want to portray? The Hillsborough public feels at an utter disadvantage in these proceedings. There is a grave imbalance of power and at stake are our very home's health and community. The November 10th meeting served to further shake the community's trust in the fairness of the planning process and underline the need for the Board to appoint a public advocate. We urge you to consider this. In the meantime, it is imperative that Mr. Hay's actions from November 10th be promptly addressed in a public forum." Thank you.
Gail Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road.
Ms. Martin, you can take the mic out of the stand if you'd like, if that would be easier.
Thank you. The warehouse proposed for Harvard Way was denied on October 13th. If it takes 45 days for an appeal, when does the 45 days start? When it's denied at the Planning Board meeting or when the resolution is completed?
When the resolution is approved by the Board and published in the paper, then the 45 days start.
Okay, so that's how the public will be notified?
No, that's how 45 days are calculated, and the public will never be notified unless an action is taken by the applicant relative to the denial.
Okay, is there a reason why the agenda is still posted as a draft for tonight's meeting?
Mr. Coys?
I'm sorry, are you referring?
Tonight's agenda.
I'm sorry, are you referring to it on Civic Clerk?
The agenda that's usually in the back of the room. There's nothing there, and if you go online, it's posted as a draft.
Okay, that's something we could look at. We did have a number of copies that were out there, but it is finalized, the agenda. The one that listed draft, that could have been an administrative error, but that is the one that was draft. There was no changes to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 3, 2155 Camp Clean Run. At the last meeting, that was last Thursday, the last Planning Board meeting on December 1st, I had provided some correspondence to every member of the Planning Board in regard to the fabricated stormwater tests that were provided for the 279 Homestead Road application. I have something that I would like to provide to the Board members also. Who can I give this to?
Who do we point, Mr. Coys? Ms. Janusik, you can start. We've got a long meeting, so if you...
At the last meeting, which was last Thursday, December 1st, 2022, there was a public hearing of the application of M&amp;M Realty Partners at Hillsborough in regard to the application for the former Glengarry quarry. I'm giving a copy of the application that was submitted to the Planning Department. It shows that it was received August 25th, I believe, 2021. It's hard to read, but it is stamped that it was received. And on here, it says, one of the things to fill out on this application is specific site concerns. It says be specific, historic, environmental, et cetera, and it says none. Attached with the application is rider one, which shows existing easements, covenants, deed restrictions. It shows there's a sanitary sewer easement agreement. Then there's a subject to right-of-way that's recorded in his deed book, subject to right-of-way of transmission lines to public service electric and gas, subject to right-of-way to New Jersey Power and Light Company, subject to right-of-way to New Jersey Power and Light Company, and other one, subject to easement and right-of-way to Buckeye Pipeline Company, subject to easement and right-of-way to Tuscarora Pipeline Company, subject to utility easement as set forth in deed book, subject to easement and right-of-way to Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority, subject to smoke and drainage rights to the County of Somerset as set forth in deed, subject to waterline easement to Elizabeth Town Water Company, subject to NJDEP permit as set forth in deed book 6180, page 2273, subject to sanitary sewer easement to the Township of Hillsborough as set forth in deed book, subject to conservation easement, subject to easement agreement as set forth in deed book. This was not mentioned, all of this was not mentioned during that meeting. Also, in addition, which is recorded in the verbatim transcript, this site, block 182, lot 11.01, the former Glengarry quarry, which is the subject of the M&amp;M Realty Partners at Hillsborough LLC, application number 21 PB16MSV, consists of 79 acres of wetlands and transition areas, 80 acres of flood hazard areas, and a combination of flood hazard areas and Delaware and Raritan-Pennell Stream corridor for 116 acres. This is per Mr. Craig Herman, who was a witness testifying for the applicant, M&amp;M Realty Partners. So the answer on this application, specific site concerns, says none. That's false. The site concerns are numerous. There were also contaminants on the site. At the meeting, the attorney for M&amp;M, former Superior Court Judge Douglas Wolfson, had a witness, Mr. Larkin, who said that he had read the NJDEP reports regarding remediation of the site. Excuse me, that contaminants were cleaned up. When I asked him what the contaminants were, he said, "I don't know." So what kind of witness is that? How could he testify that the site was cleaned up because he read the NJDEP reports? But then when he was asked what were the contaminants, he said, "I don't know," and that was acceptable. The application of M&amp;M Realty is part of Hillsborough's affordable housing obligation, and they have a settlement agreement. That settlement agreement was what the whole application revolves around, and yet that settlement agreement is not provided to the members of the public on the Civic Clerk.
Ms. Janusik, can you wrap your comments? You've exceeded your five minutes.
Excuse me?
You've reached your five minutes, please.
So that settlement agreement, the application revolves around a settlement agreement, and that was not provided to the public, nor was a copy of the verbatim transcript. So when people ask questions, they don't know what to ask because months go by when the next meeting comes up. That application was approved. That application was approved, which means a heck of a lot more flooding going on, and the people who are here should be aware that this is going to be a very serious issue.
Okay.
And as I said, it says none on there when there are serious site concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, live on Huff Lane.
Ben, take it if you want to.
My name is Leisha.
You might want to take it out of the...
My name is Leisha Gabor-Beylis. Good evening.
Can I spell your last name, please, ma'am?
G-A-B as in boy, E-R, B-A-Y-L-I-S.
Thank you.
First name, L-I-C-I-A. So I have a couple of questions, general questions, and follow-up from when I came on November 3rd. So one is, when a document is updated, do you retain the old copies online? Or like, how does that work? Like, if a document is updated, do you remove the old one or do you keep it?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have the answer to that, to the exact process. My understanding is that all the information normally that would be available to the public is supposed to be the same thing that's in our files. So I would maybe perhaps need an example. So if there was one that you're curious about, we could double-check that and confirm with the office staff.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
So two of them are the community impact statements from the Royce Brook. I have noted it was 2021 maybe on it, and cost cutters was 2020. I had made links just so it would be easier for myself to find them, and I just tried them recently and they didn't work. So I didn't go and try to search to see if there's a new one. So that was another question. Have you, has there been updates to these? Like, that was maybe back in June that I looked at them last.
I don't believe there have been any updates to those community impact statements.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes, sorry. Sometimes, depending on when the meeting gets moved to different dates, depending on the link that you had, sometimes that perhaps could be the issue that you're having with the links. And again, we could double-check with the staff to see what the best way to do that is.
Sorry, what was the issue?
So sometimes, basically, it could be associated with a particular date. And so depending on how the documentation's getting uploaded, and so perhaps that might have... Sometimes, as an application keeps going on and on and on, sometimes depending on where those links are, sometimes the staff might have to go and move some things around. So perhaps that might be the reason why you still don't have access to those original links. But if you do, normally what would happen is if you go into the date that all the information is in, it's supposed to stay there, but we could double-check.
I think it would be helpful to the public, especially if it's, once it's published, it could stay there for eternity ideally, just so you could find it again and you could reference it. You could see if it changes, you could sort of like, you know, actually compare them to see if anything did change. Also related to that was, so I believe last Thursday I wasn't able to attend, but that was the West Tract application. And was it that, it was 198 houses and then it went down to 10, and it was requested that they would be redoing their community impact statement to reflect 10 fewer? Is that correct?
I don't believe there was an impact statement.
So it wasn't going to be modified to show 10 fewer houses?
They didn't have an impact statement.
West Tract? They did. They did.
I don't believe it was going to be modified.
Okay. Also, did everyone, were you all here on November 3rd when I spoke and talked about the community impact statement and especially the impact to the schools?
Yeah.
I think at least most of you were. So the thing is, what I was wanting to have changed ideally on the current applications, because why wait till we get yet another one, is to just fix the wording so that it's very crystal clear to the public especially, that this is how it works. Like, it's, here's how much money you're going to bring in from new taxes, here's how much we're going to estimate it's going to cost for the students. Those numbers are totally fine, it's whatever their estimates are. But don't correlate the two. Don't say that one is going to cover the other one. Also, with the... Also with the, and I could read off what it shows on here for the West Tract, but also for, let's see, for the cost cutters, what was it? Sorry. It's sort of annoying having to hold this. The cost, yeah, the cost cutter one actually said, "The enrollment of these children in the Hillsborough Township School District would result in an allocated tax-supported school district cost of, rounding, $400,000. These school district costs would be fully offset by added school district tax revenues of $572,000," again rounding, "yielding a revenue surplus amount mounting to $167,000." And unfortunately, as I explained to you, that's not how it works. I know that in the township budget, they have a line on sheet three levy cap, says adjusted levy tax levy. And I don't know the township budget all that well and how it works, I haven't asked too many questions of that one. But that one says for new ratables, increase for new construction, they have a dollar amount. Prior years, local tax, purpose tax rate per $100 is .31, and then new ratable adjustment to the levy is like $73,000 in the most recent budget. I think this might have been a draft though, because I have it from before. The school doesn't have that. The school doesn't have that option. And just to make it so that the town people understand that when the school wants to go to a referendum or something, because they want to raise the taxes with all of these buildings going on, especially to cover the students, it would just be nice for them to have this corrected in the CIS statements. And I don't really understand why we have to wait for a brand-new application when we've gotten at least three since I've started contacting people earlier this summer. Also, Mr. Bernstein, do you understand the tax levy issues with the school district?
Do I understand tax levies? Yes.
With the school part. So do you see how, what I'm saying is incorrect in the statements?
I'm not commenting one way or the other, ma'am.
So only the school board, BA, is the only person that you guys will listen to. Is that correct?
So since you were here last, I've communicated with them again to ask them if they were going to give us any comments on any of the ongoing applications, and they still have not sent us a response directly.
Okay.
We are, again, I have reached out to them to explain some of the concerns that you brought up, and some of the concerns from the public, and we are asking for some guidance because they do play a role in this part, in that they get the copies of it, and it's something that would be appropriate for them to comment on and to send back to the planning board.
Okay, and I believe that you understand how this is working. I believe that some of you at least understand how this is working, and I'd appreciate your support to change this, to make it, you know, crystal clear, so that everyone understands.
Okay. I am sorry, I have to cut you off at this point.
Also, just with the ordinance, if you could...
I'm sorry, I have to...
Come back another time, please.
Thank you.
Just to be fair, Ms. Bayliss, you know, the school children are also estimates, it's not a definitive number. It's a fluctuating number, correct?
That is totally correct, but that is not my point.
But the revenue is a definite, so...
The revenue is not a definite. That is not how it works.
The revenue generated is a definite.
Yes, but my point is that it doesn't get added to the budget. It doesn't get added to what the school district can use.
If the school system gives us some guidance for change, we will address it, so since they're the one most directly impacted.
All right, I know my margin orders. I will work on that. Thank you so much.
David Brook, Seven Winding Way. The public may not be aware, this is, sorry, this is a procedural question that I would like to bring up to the board, and the public may not be aware of a bit of a flurry of activity yesterday with regards to a memo that David Coys put forth.
That's for his application, sorry.
This is a procedural question. Let me finish if I can. You'll tell me if I'm out of order.
I will tell you you're out of order because we do have objectors here who could raise that issue if they like, so that is a matter that is on the agenda, so I'm sorry.
You haven't heard the question. You haven't heard the question. At least allow me to present the question. And so the public knows there's been a flurry of letters back and forth as it relates to Mr. Coys and what he wrote. Basically, that the board should take no action until NJDEP issues are resolved as it relates to an application, yes. But my question simply relates to the procedure, and I would like to confirm with the board that the objectors and that the public will be allowed to participate, and this decision, if there is a decision, is going to occur before the applicant begins presenting their case, and we don't have that opportunity, excuse me, that opportunity. That's the question.
I would say the objector will have the opportunity, all of them. And that's why there are objectors, and that's one of the benefits of being an objector. And Bernie Bernstein, I'll let you add on.
I would concur, Mr. Chairman. The objectors will have an opportunity to comment accordingly.
But the question is, will that occur before they are seated so that the board has the full opportunity to decide to go forward, because in the past, it seems when there were questions, the applicant came strongly up and began testifying before there was a decision on the question, and I think this is an incredibly important question.
The objectors can object if that were, if that was the start, and they object to the applicant starting their testimony. So we will get to that hypothetical question when, if we get to the public hearing portion of applications, and particularly the one that you're not referencing to at this point.
I'm not referencing to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, no one's up. So we are going to go to the applications, public hearings. We are going to go in the order of the agenda tonight. Mr. Coys?
Okay, so first up is Jennifer Bryson, PRL, with the file number of 22-PB-S, with the time of decision of December 31st of this year, block 169, lots 3 and 3.01, otherwise commonly known as Wartsville Road and 145 Wartsville Road. Applicant is seeking minor subdivision, lot line adjustment, and waivers to subdivide five acres from lot 3, which is an existing 80.247 acres, to lot 3.01, which is an existing 10.903 acres, to make lot 3.01 conforming lot on property in the mountain zone, a mountain conservation zone.
Ladies, before you speak, please get the mics close to you, A so the public can hear, B so Mr. Baylen can hear, and C the board can hear.
You're going to have to use individual ones.
Individual ones.
Thank you. It should be.
Should be, yeah.
I'm Pam Matthews. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor.
I get closer.
I assume the green light means it's on.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Pam Matthews. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor, stayed in New Jersey. I work for Van Cleef Engineering. I prepared this subdivision for Jennifer Bryson, who's sitting here with me. Pretty much it's just a land swap between her and her neighbor, her neighbor's lot 3, that is 80 acres, and he has agreed to sell five acres to Mrs. Bryson, making her a lot.
You're going to have to talk louder, because people in the back can't hear you. Get closer to them.
Okay.
Do you want to try this one?
Maybe I just need to, oh, just put it really...
Yeah.
Okay. And that's pretty much it. I mean, there's no improvements proposed as part of this subdivision. It's just a lot line adjustment between two neighbors. Both are farmland assessed and will continue to be. That's pretty much it. This is Ms. Bryson, or Jennifer Bryson, here beside me.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things.
Yep.
Raise your right hand, please. Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Absolutely.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, please.
Jennifer Bryson, B-R-Y-S-O-N.
Ms. Matthews, you're a witness.
I love that. I'm Jennifer. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for your time. I've lived in Hillsborough for 28 years. I'm a professional engineer and environmentalist. I have served on the Board of the Sauerland Conservancy for over 20 years. I'm a current board member for New Jersey Conservation Foundation. I'm also an active member of the Somerset County Open Space Board. I've lived in that farm, like I said, for a very long time, and there is a beautiful ecosystem in the back that I love very dearly and have wanted to get a few additional acres. The owner, the current owner, has never been in a position to sell until now, and told me that they were ready to move the lot line. That's all this is, is a lot line to the south, one direction only. I'm not proposing any improvements, and in fact, I will say I have improved it quite a bit. I planted 1,200 trees this year on my property and only intend to continue doing that. My property and the piece that I'm buying are both farmland assessed. My farming is all up near the road. It is not in this new area. It's beekeeping and chickens, and I do have a couple of horses. The area that is the new five acres would be, would fall under my woodland management plan, and it's... And like I said, I don't propose to do anything back there other than to walk around and enjoy it and probably plant some more trees.
Mr. Coys, I know you prepared a memo.
I know it came out late in the day. Or did you receive a copy of the memo?
I did, yeah, very, about an hour ago.
Okay. I have extra hard copies here, in case. Are you prepared to start to address some of those?
I would strenuously hope to not do a conservation easement, nor any kind of environmental work or study back there. In around 2010, I organized a coalition of all the towns in the Sauerlands, including Hillsborough. You may have remembered me coming before this board and the Township Committee a number of times, obtained a significant grant, and on behalf of all the towns in the Sauerlands, hired a biologist who did a natural resource inventory on the whole Sauerlands, including that area, so I'm well aware of how special that area is. I don't need to go out and spend additional money to document that, and that's a big part of why I live there and why I want to just have a couple more acres to do nothing on them. And a conservation easement, to me, might make sense if I were proposing to do any kind of building, but I'm not. I'm not even moving a fence line because there is no fence line. I'm not proposing to do anything. And for me to do a conservation easement or additional environmental studies would, in my mind, not add anything to anyone's benefit and merely cost me money. I'm retired. I run the place by myself, and I'd rather spend any extra money I have on planting trees.
Mr. Chairman, just to address some of the technicalities, essentially, in the beginning of my memo, the applicant is requesting a number of waivers, and some of the waivers, they basically state sections, and under those sections, there are specific numbers. So one of the things I was asking in the memo was, you know, specifically, if the applicant could specify which ones they're actually requesting. Also, looking at the plot plan requirements in our ordinance, it specifically spells out for any subdivision, as I said, basically showing on the plan all streams, lakes, and drainage right-of-way, including direction of all streams, brooks and drainage right-of-way, the location of all drainage structures, and appropriate location of flood hazard and flood lines, deep slopes, wetlands, and swamps based on soil conservation service data. Basically, what I'm trying to ask from the applicant is to be very specific, and if that is a waiver request that she is requesting, to make that clear and to put that on the record.
Do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to? I think the idea of the waiver was a waiver of any very detailed maps and topography maps. The wetlands, I can tell you, change depending on what day you go out there. And again, because all we're doing is proposing to move a lot line, I don't see how those detailed charts and maps are going to add any relevant information. I would have no problem doing those things if I were proposing to change anything or build anything. The map that you provided, which showed some of the wetlands, is as good as any map that I would generate through surveys, and I'm not saying that that's not important. I just don't think that it's going to be a benefit, and it's going to be very costly.
Mr. Chairman, what I was attempting to do was to bring to the boards attention of some of the environmental issues that our staff in the office was able to identify by using the GIS, and to also make it clear and to understand. It has been a common occurrence from the planning board when doing subdivisions, that if there are environmentally constrained areas, that they can be, you know, protected through conservation easements. What I was attempting to do through this memo was to gain an understanding, as there was very little information in the narrative to explain some of the intentions. Although Ms. Bryson has indicated some of those reasons so far, I would like to get to the next part of the memo. My recommendation, and again, as a staff, some of the information that we're putting together, normally, it's not the burden of the town. It's the burden of the applicant to provide this information, but I felt that it was very appropriate, especially since waivers regarding these areas were being requested. And I still maintain that I recommend that the further investigation be made to identify the environmentally sensitive areas, and as Ms. Bryson had indicated, that she identified, in her opinion, that there is an ecosystem back there, and some of the information that the state has in identifying endangered species, and in some cases, a high level of them, I have some concerns. I have some concerns that there hasn't been enough information provided for us to know, and also the idea that there is an opportunity to protect those areas, and for the board to take that into consideration.
And I want to respond to that as someone who, like I said, has been deeply immersed in the Sauerlands ecosystem since I moved there 28 years ago, that I really applaud that sentiment, and am often in front of this board asking for that same thing. In this particular situation, there's nothing that's being proposed to change. There is no building. There are no fences. The most I'm going to do is plant native trees, and so there's, any kind of studies or maps are not going to influence in any way anything that happens there because there's nothing happening. If by some bizarre notion I might have to do something at some point, I would then have to come back before this board, and then I think those things would make much sense. I don't have any intention to ever do that, but that, to me, would be the appropriate time to look in more detail. At this point, the only proposal is to change the ownership. That's it.
If I could, with all due respect, so obviously, you know that this lot line goes with the property in perpetuity, long after you've left this property. So it is our responsibility to make sure that the lot is protected post Ms. Bryson, right?
Yes, and it says...
So the reason that Mr. Coys is bringing this up is you may have all intentions not to do anything back there, but you go to sell it 10 years from now, the new owner may. So we would want, and to Mr. Coys, we want to have some sort of guarantees or easements or conservation, even some sort that that does not happen. I think that's where he's going.
But that could happen with the current owner. That could happen with anybody, and also, by the way, it really couldn't happen because it's, what's back there is protected under the state's Vernal Pool requirements. No, but I don't think that could happen. But it's not changing anything to have me own it versus who's owning it now.
And is there any other, I mean, I know it's owned, or any other purchasers inquiring onto the rest of that property that you know of?
Well, I can tell you that that is that entire area, not just around me, but across the street. The entire area has many acres that have already been preserved. As I mentioned, I'm on the board at New Jersey Conservation Foundation. That's been very active. Somerset County Open Space Board is very interested in that whole area. And that is hundreds and hundreds of acres that remain to be preserved, fingers crossed.
Would that include the property that you're looking at now?
It would include that property, but not that five acres out of hundreds of acres. And...
Why not?
Well, because the current owner has agreed to sell it to me. It's five acres out of hundreds. It's not going to change, it's not going to in any way affect whether or not the rest of the hundreds of acres get preserved.
Mr. Chairman, then, and Planning Board, just to, you know, some of the things that were just discussed, just to make it very clear. Block 169, Lot 3, is identified on the Somerset County's acquisition list as found on the Somerset County Preservation Plan that's dated May 2022 and also included a map of that. So just to make it clear, this is a property that's been in the interest of the county to become part of the Sauerland preserves. So just so that we could also address some other technicalities here. You had represented that, obviously, there's a residential home on the property. So are you aware that in the mountain conservation district that agricultural use is considered a conditional use?
I wasn't aware, but...
So as I was taking over this application from the Planning Director, Mr. Maskey, I was further reviewing and also being the deputy zoning officer, I was going through. And so basically, what I'm trying to understand is, and you had identified that there are some agricultural use taking place. One of, like, one of my concerns in terms of, from a technical standpoint, is since we consider an agricultural use in the mountain zone a conditional use, coming with the conditional use is a site plan approval. That would be, you know, through the MLU. There's a connection between the two. I know you're only here so far. You've only made application as a subdivision. There's also specific conditions that are laid out that you would have to meet. And there are also specific bulk requirements associated with the agricultural use. And then the last part I wanted to finish with, I think there's been some indication that by adding this additional five acres, it would be making the lot conforming. One of the technical aspects for this from a zoning perspective is the mountain zone. Basically, there's a provision in the ordinance that grandfathered a number of lots. And some of the research that I did, it shows that your lot is actually grandfathered, meaning that it consisted of at least five acres by the date that's stated in the ordinance. And so right now, your lot is basically conforming, even though that it's not 15 acres. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that, the applicant to be aware of that. And that is the last of my comments.
I just want to clarify for purposes of farming that my existing lot is 11 acres. About five, one acre is the house, five, this is roughly. Five acres is where the chickens and the bees and the horses are. And the five acres in the back are woodland management plan. And my intention is to fold the new five acres into the woodland management plan. I have zero desire or interest to do any active farming back there. My goal is to create a beautiful ecosystem that has only native species. That is an expensive endeavor. I'm thinking 10 years ahead. And I'd rather have every extra penny I have go toward that than to spend more documentation saying that it's a beautiful place because it is.
Mr. Hoyt, anything from the engineer?
We received the recent mission letter dated December 2nd.
A little closer to the...
Sorry. We received the December 2nd, 2022 letter. Appears the applicants addressed the comments that we had in our prior letter. So nothing further there.
Is the applicant willing to meet the condition set forth in the November 28, 2022 letter from Panone?
I don't believe there were so much conditions as there were comments that they appear to have addressed in the revised submission.
Yes, we addressed those items.
So just kind of reiterating what Mr. Coys was outlining. So it appears that we do need to get on the record that you're seeking waivers, I'm going to say, from the entire sections, K, L, and M is what is being implied?
That's what was put in, put in the application, was specifically waivers from section K, L, and M.
Do you think the request is why?
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah.
Because there's no improvements proposed at this time and...
Okay. The only thing I would also ask, we haven't been given any kind of written information that the seller has agreed to sell this to you, which is normally we would need to see to grant this lot line because right now you don't own it.
I don't own it now. I have a signed contract. And the procedure that I understand, not a, I've never done this before. You get a contract, you get approval, and then you make...
I don't think we have a copy of that contract.
That, I'm happy to provide that.
So Mr. Burnstein, that would need to be a condition?
Yes. Condition of any approval will be the receipt of and the review of said contract.
Okay. And kind of getting back to the agricultural use in the mountain zone with, you know, because again, this probably would need to be another waiver to the site plan? Or do we, or is there a deed restriction that needs to be imposed?
I'm going to have to defer to legal counsel to be able to answer that.
I would suggest a deed restriction.
It would be against any agricultural activities on the acquired portion.
If you do that, then I lose my farmland assessment. Yeah, I mean, why, why would you do that?
Because the ordinance explicitly states a site plan is required. So you know, you haven't provided one. And some of the other items that, you know, Mr. Coys was, you know, was addressing.
We would ask you to provide us with a letter from the ag people indicating that if they place it, it's going to be restricted to, it's a fascinating concept. Restricting it for agricultural use denies you a right to farm designation.
I don't really understand what you're...
You're in, you just indicated that if we put on a deed restriction, that the land is going to be restricted for agricultural use, you will lose your agricultural...
Are you restricting me to agriculture use or restricting me from agriculture use?
To.
And so why would you restrict anything that is different from what I'm doing now?
Because you're seeking a waiver from the requirement for a site plan.
At this point, it's probably cheaper to do a site plan than to have a deed restriction. But what is the site plan going to tell you? I'm not proposing to do anything other than move one property line.
Right. But it's documenting what you're going to do. Because there's a few, you know, three bullet items I'm going to call it, Mr. Coys listed here about the conditions. You know, that, there's restrictions on the maximum clearing that you could do.
I'm not proposing to do any clearing.
But that's what a site plan would memorialize. Without such item, there is, I think I'm going to get counseled by council.
No.
No?
It's farmland assessed. I don't know if they get that through woodland assessment or not. I assume so, but I don't...
So, I don't know. I'll just ask to ask, but I ask, so why would the deed restrict, why would you be restricted? Sorry. So again, we're looking to protect the property in its perpetuity. So by deed restricting it, we guarantee that this land will be used for the farming purpose forever.
As opposed to what? What else would I do with it? It's, my zoning is 15 acres. I can't...
Your zoning is 15 acres, where we don't have a lot line. We don't, you're asking for waivers. We don't even have the letter of agreement between the two parties. You're asking us to make a lot of leaps and fates here, in all honesty, even though it's a simple lot line adjustment?
I don't have any problem getting you the signed contract.
The protection of the deed restriction allows us to know that farming only will be done on this even after you leave. Someone can always come back after you and ask for a waiver to do something else.
I, any kind of deed restriction to me just doesn't make any sense. I'd rather go back and try and figure out the mapping.
Well, that's your choice.
So, but, so specifically, you're saying that you can't approve this unless we provide the site plan?
Well, no. I mean, I think the mayor gave an option. Either in lieu of a site plan, there's a deed restriction. But if that is not, you know, acceptable, you know, the ordinance is clear for the site plan, so...
I just don't even know what that deed restriction would be. I'd have no idea what I was agreeing to. It is a farm. We've had many discussions with our tax assessor about how much of a farm it is. But I have no idea what's going to happen as far as my farmland assessment or what I would be agreeing to. I don't know that that would make any sense to do that.
Well, you could always ask for an adjournment to go talk to someone, answer those questions for you. You could come back.
Okay, so what is that procedure then?
Asking for continuance of the application to another date.
And then to go, and in that interim, doing what?
Your homework. I would...
Yeah, what is the, what is the homework?
Try and help her a little bit. You would have to make some decisions on which direction that you would want to go. Would you want to apply formally for the site plan approval as per the ordinance is pretty clear on stating? Or did you want to request specifically a waiver from site plan and address a deed restriction or a conservation easement or possibly a stewardship easement or something perhaps to, for the board to perhaps make a decision on what they would grant?
And is that in discussions with you? I mean, a stewardship easement is much more interesting to me.
I think at this point, there doesn't appear to be enough information. I mean, right now, in terms of us becoming aware of all the environmental concern, and even in the application, when you read the application, it was indicated, part of the application was left blank where it said, you know, environmental site-specific concerns. There was nothing listed. So as a staff, as we're becoming more aware of all this information, and even through your testimony, that you had said there's a special ecosystem there, I think some more thought needs to be put into what would be appropriate. And so essentially, you would go and you would do some of that work and certainly could contact the town. And then you would let us know when you're ready, when you're ready to come back.
I think I have a very good sense of what's appropriate there, which is why I put 1,200 trees in this year. The question is, what is, what does the town think is appropriate? And I only see how the land is better if it's under my stewardship. I understand you guys, you don't know that. You're looking for something. So I'm going to need to meet with you, I guess, specifically to understand that.
So you want a, you want a site plan?
It's working.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
You want a site plan that is basically, we're showing no improvements?
Right in front of the mic. There you go.
No, you got to push, I think you hit the button.
Okay. I just want to understand this. You want a site plan that proposes nothing? I mean, I just, I'm just, I'm just really seriously trying...
I think Mr. Coys clearly outlined items that would go into that site plan, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not about...
But you also said in your letter that both lots were, are exempt from, where they were both grandfathered in because they existed prior to that?
They're grandfathered in in terms of when we talk about if a lot is conforming or non-conforming and in terms of being able to build on them. So from that standpoint, those are lots basically that were created by the date that's stated in the mountain zone. And I just wanted to clarify, it's not what I'm looking for. It's what the ordinance is stating clear. And I have a responsibility to make sure that the planning board and the public and the applicant is very aware of all the rules and regulations that are in our land use ordinance. And simply me raising this is trying to give you an opportunity to address them. It's up to you to decide which direction you would want to do that. I certainly can't do that for you. And if you're not prepared to proceed, then perhaps you may want to consider coming up with a different plan or something more concrete so that the board can consider it.
So you want a site plan that shows us doing nothing? I mean, I'm not really, I just want to walk out of here and know what we need to do. And I, I'm...
Can I make the following suggestion?
Yeah, I think it's probably the one I'm thinking of, but I'm not sure if I can make it.
My suggestion is that the applicant meet with Mr. Coys. And since she's concerned about the impact potentially on our farmland assessment with Ms. Blaney, who's the township's tax assessor, and see if the parties can come up with an agreement upon which to address the issue and meet the issues of the board, which ostensibly is long-term preservation beyond the applicant's ownership. If that's acceptable to the applicant.
That's fine. I would have preferred it was just approved, but I'll take that.
That's why we got ordinances and stuff, to make sure everything is buttoned up, so...
So...
Yeah, why don't we, you asked, can we get approval with that condition?
No.
No. I would suggest that you seek an adjournment to Feb., no, January 12th is when the reorg is.
The magic day.
That's the magic day. Because that's when the planning board reorgs, will adopt its new calendar schedule or its new schedule for the year. And then from there, on that, they can actually schedule, you know, the, your next hearing, your next appearance.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Coys and the applicant and his representative and Ms. Blaney can meet in advance of the 12th, we may be able to at least indicate where she would fit on the schedule and not have to come back, simply put it on. There are no objectors as far as we're aware at the moment. And no public, though the public, the open to the public is up to the board, that would require necessarily them to be here on the 12th versus some of our other applications who have to be here on the 12th.
I'm happy to meet with Mr. Coys. And I believe that this is a matter that's before the planning board. I don't believe that Ms. Blaney should be part of the discussions of what I'm trying to do as far as a lot line adjustment. Once that is hopefully approved, my discussions with her as far as how I continue my farmland assessment will happen.
I only made the recommendation, Ms. Bryson, because you indicated during your testimony that you were concerned about the impact of this request as it relates to your farmland assessment.
I am. If I, if I drop out of woodland management or farming... If I, if I drop out of woodland management or farming,
Yeah.
I lose my assessment. That's a reasonable finding.
It is, but I think the intent wasn't to be penal. It was to ensure that whatever you work out with Mr. Coys is not going to impact you from a tax perspective. So to pull Ms. Blaney in to make sure that whatever you decide is going to, is going to work from a tax.
I'm certainly able to follow up with her on my own.
Yeah, fine.
Yep.
Your prerogative. Just a suggestion.
And Mr. Bernstein, it is okay if Mr. Coys meets with the applicant? That's, there's nothing inappropriate about that. Is that correct?
I don't believe so to try to resolve an issue on behalf of the board.
Just wanted to make sure.
And also, so there's a time of decision that would have to be extended. It's right now, it's December 31st, 2022. So in terms of, let's see here.
I would suggest March 1st. I would suggest March 1st. I don't get to move the mic, unfortunately.
When does he meet the due? Is it not? So this isn't the next meeting?
And yeah, just discuss if you're not comfortable with it. Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Yeah, we have to make.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn to. Continue, continue the application to at least January 12th, 2023. Or a date to be discussed. What? You want to open the public? Yeah. If the public wants to speak on what's been discussed so far. All right.
You want to? Okay. Is there a motion to open the public?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If there's anyone from the public that would like to discuss this application or the testimony that's been provided.
Should be just questions on this.
It's the testimony.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. I think I'm in the theater of the absurd.
Okay, David.
But I'm allowed to make a comment.
No. Ask.
I have never heard the board be so interested.
David.
What?
Knock it off.
I can speak.
No, you can't.
I can speak.
Within.
This is still a free country, as time I check.
David. What you've been granted is the opportunity to question the witnesses on their testimony, not to pontificate. You get to do that later. Trust me.
That's a great question.
No, it's not a question. You're here to ask a question of the two witnesses.
So I'm not sure. Am I, am I asking the engineer?
Either one.
So Ms. Bryson, you've indicated that you plan to preserve this property and not make any changes to it. Is that correct?
Ms. Bryson, please come back to the mic.
Mr. Brooks, the problem, just for the record, while we're discussing.
And also, just before that, no outbursts going forward. Okay? I got, you know, I've made this clear in plenty of meetings. This is professional decorum here. We may not like the way the decorum has to go, but there are, there are rules of order that we need to follow. And if I hear any outbursts, I will decide whether or not public gets to stay or not.
And there, you're wrong.
David.
I don't think you get that choice.
All right, David.
We could adjourn.
You can adjourn. That's correct.
That's correct.
That's your, that's your prerogative.
And we can clear the room. And then we can reconvene.
Then it's not a public meeting.
It is a public meeting. Just please ask the question.
So Ms. Bryson, you've indicated that you intend to acquire property and preserve it and do nothing with it other than leave it in preservation. Is that correct?
Not leave it in preservation as it's not currently preserved. I intend to leave it in farmland assessment, plant trees, leave it alone.
And you're not proposing to put a building on it? Is that correct?
No, I'm not.
And you're not proposing to do anything other than to preserve it?
Again, that's, that word has legal implications, so I don't, there's nothing to preserve. It's already protected by existing zoning. I can't do anything with it. I do not intend to build anything on it.
So you're going to retain the, the character of the land the way it is and actually make improvements from an ecological point of view?
Correct.
And this is required as a subdivision? Mr. Coys has indicated that, that in order to do a subdivision, you have to actually provide a drawing that shows you're not doing anything.
Apparently.
Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Coys?
You don't need to answer that question, the witness.
Okay. And I'm a little bit confused because normally I would think a subdivision would require that you are coming in to propose to do something on the property. Is that correct?
Yes, it's only a lot line adjustment. I'm merely trying to make my property go from 11 acres to 16.
Do you, do you intend to make any other changes to it other than ecological changes?
None. I can't afford them.
And to do this subdivision, my understanding is that you need to come forth with a drawing that will show the acquisition of those additional five acres.
Yeah, we have provided that drawing. That's up on the wall.
So that's no different than what you are being asked to do? Is that correct? This delineates what you are proposing to acquire. I'm sorry, the engineer.
Yes.
I don't know your name.
Yes, it is. Pam Matthews.
Pam.
Please use the microphone, Ms. Matthews.
So, so the drawing up there is a full representation, is a full representation of what you proposed to do with the subdivision, nothing else?
No, Mr. Brooks. What it proposes is a lot line reconfiguration. It's not a subdivision. Part of the problem is the mixing of words and metaphors. The requirements are set forth in the ordinance. The individual's been advised. This is more than just her situation. It's an ongoing, long-term situation beyond the applicant.
I don't understand that. I'm sorry. If somebody comes in and wants to build a warehouse, do they get some restriction that says they can't tear down the warehouse afterwards?
Is that a question of the applicant?
Well, I'm not sure if they're qualified to talk about warehouses.
Well, don't answer because they're, you're asking them questions of their testimony.
I'm sorry.
I don't think they had mentioned warehouses.
So when you made application, I'm not sure who formally made the application, Pam, you made the application to the township. Is that correct? And did you get some kind of information back from the township that you were required to do all these things before you came before the board?
We got a review letter from Mr. Coys at 6:30.
Hit the button, please.
6:30 today?
Yes.
Okay. And so when you came to this meeting, did you have any understanding of all of these kinds of questions that were going to be asked of you? And let me rephrase it. Did you have an understanding of the expectations of the township and their attorney with regards to?
First of all, it's not the township, it's the planning board, Mr. Coys. Let's please try to correct applicants, the correct board.
Did you have any indication from the township staff of what your requirements are with regards to when you came before this board and the kinds of challenges that they've now thrown at you?
I was not aware of those requirements.
So in other words, no notice to you with regards to your spending your time and effort to come here to propose to do nothing to a piece of property, to now be told you must go back and do all these other things, kind of like in The Wizard of Oz, bringing back the broomstick?
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so it's not a broomstick?
No. Okay.
But the same idea that now you're being challenged with regards to all these other requirements for a proposal that, if I'm not mistaken, I heard you say you're not going to be doing anything other than changing a lot line.
I will say that everything that I'm trying to do on this property is exactly what I think you're saying you want in the long run. And it does feel like Hillsborough puts obstacles in the way at every turn. Every penny I spend replying to comments tonight is another dollar I don't have for trees or I don't have for brush or clearing invasives. I really would appreciate the town help, not hinder, not only my efforts, but other people's efforts that are trying to do the right thing out there. This is a simple lot line adjustment. You're not going to have any more protections before or after I go fill these maps and charts and things. It's just going to be less money. It's frustrating, but I'll do it because I want to have five more acres.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions of the witnesses on this application?
Can I ask you guys?
Nope. No.
Can somebody just like review what the deed restriction was because you sort of lost us with that one? Yeah, sorry.
And followed by name?
Oh, sorry. Rich Garman, Winding Way. G-A-H-R-M-A-N-N.
The answer, Mr. Garman, is in Mr. Coys's memo, there's a provision in the township code relative to what's being looked for in terms of you're seeking a waiver. If you're not seeking a waiver, which we are seeking here, there would be different situations. But the party here is seeking a waiver of certain provisions of the code. And with the waiver, provisions require certain things to occur, whether it is either a deed restriction or some form of site plan. No waiver requested, no requirement for a deed restriction or a site plan. So.
I got that. She has 11 acres and it's farmland possessed.
The farmland assessment.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand where the deed.
For the purposes of the record,
Okay.
farmland assessment has absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with zoning or planning. It is a tax issue related to whether or not a party is entitled to reduce taxes for the acre-reaching question. So when people start throwing around the words farmland assessment, and just like for you, for the public and the record, farmland assessment is nothing special when it comes to planning and zoning.
Understood. I'm just trying to understand. She had 11 acres under and she has.
She has five acres.
She has 11. And right now, grandfathered and farmed, right? Because she should be farming in the mountain zone, if I understood that. She wants to add the five acres and somebody proposed a deed restriction on that five acres against farming.
No.
No?
No.
Okay, that's where I lost you. I'm just trying to clarify that.
Deed restriction was for farming.
So if she adds the five acres, the deed restriction would require her to continue it as farmland. Am I understanding that?
Not to do anything else other than.
Okay. Okay.
You know, the issue with that is that once I have a deed restriction in favor of farming, I can't then turn it into a beautiful, wild ecosystem where it's not farmed. Who knows what I might want to do in 10 or 20 years or if I'm, I'm even still there.
But that's exactly the point.
To restore. Exactly. Which is why would you be advocating for it to stay in farming?
You don't know what you're going to want to do in 10 or 20 years. And obviously neither do we.
But why would you advocate that I put a deed restriction on there for farming?
We're not. You have two choices.
Well, that's.
Actually, actually, there's a third. The third choice is to not ask for the waivers.
And just to review these waivers, they're not variances. They were waivers for certain requirements of mapping because nothing is being done.
But if you have a site plan, that site plan puts historical data in place saying, this is what the property is like as of this date. 10 years from now, if you make a change that you're not allowed to make, where somebody else comes in and you sell it to somebody else, they make changes they're not allowed to make, we now have historical data that explains that and says that changed.
Yeah, don't we.
That's the purpose of a site plan. We, that's not this map, this, this lot line adjustment. It has all the survey information and all of the improvements on it. That's of record.
Any other public?
No, because nothing's proposed.
Yeah, please.
Grant Holmer, Taylor Avenue. So I'm hearing public testimony and verbal confirmation, you're not doing anything. Have you provided any written documentation that you're not going to do anything for the perpetuity of 1,000, 100, doesn't matter how many years? Have you provided anything?
I don't know what you mean by anything.
Well, you, you, you want to preserve the purpose. It's wonderful that I'm hearing, but I'm just wondering, is there anything written in documentation that you will state you will not be doing anything?
The best I can tell you is that I'm here not proposing to do anything.
And is it written and down in your application?
Yes, it's in my application. My application says I merely want to move the lot line. I'm not asking to change anything else.
That's why I guarantee that the property stays.
But if I want to do something in the future, I have to come back. I can't just do something. I can't, I would have to come back. I'm not applying to do anything. If I wanted to ever do something, I would have to come back. That's the process.
The process is if you wanted to erect something on the property, the requirements under the waivers are the designations that's set forth in Mr. Coys's memo as the items that need to be on the site plan, the indication of the vernal pools and related items. That survey is exactly what it is. It's a survey. It shows the current property designations and a proposed lot line redesignation to add five acres to your existing lot.
With all the conditions on the property, not just the lines around the perimeter?
Okay.
Any other public comment?
Any other questions from the public? Okay. So now we have.
Motion to adjourn. Application to January the 12th, where we would then schedule it.
Right, continue. No, I don't know if it's a continued journey because we have to schedule.
Continuation till.
We're going to continuation to the 12th of next year, January 12th of next year, with the time of decision.
March 1st.
Of 2023, so is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Scobo.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, or roll call, sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Chicaralee.
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag.
Yes.
Mr. Scobo.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Mayor Lepani.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Julian.
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to next application, but I don't know if, since I can't see Michael in here, he's been.
He's gone. Kaz wants a call.
Can you text him real quick to see if he needs a break? What? Yeah, but he doesn't have my number. He can't text me. You want to take, all right. We're going to take a five-minute break. You know what? We'll reconvene at 9:05.
I would ask that the objectors, as well as Mr. O'Grodnick, come to the front so we can deal with whatever issues we need to start with.
Welcome to the assessor's office. I'm Deborah Blaney, the Hillsborough Assessor. In this department, we are responsible for valuing all the properties within Hillsborough Township. We implement an annual reassessment program that is approved by the State Division of Taxation. All properties are inspected once every five years, but the property values can change every year based on market trends. The deputy assessor will give more specifics on what is involved in a reassessment inspection. And you can also refer to our webpage and check out our FAQ and reference to the program. There is also a link to the current tax list where you can look up the value of all properties within Hillsborough. Another function of our office is to distribute and accept applications for deductions such as qualifying veterans, seniors, disabled veterans, and several other deductions. Please visit our webpage to see if you qualify for any deductions. Lastly, I would like to mention that the assessor's department is not associated with is not associated with tax payments and tax bills. If you need assistance with tax payments, we will refer you to the collector's office. For more information, go to hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below. Now, the deputy assessor will discuss what is involved with a reassessment inspection of your property.
Hi, I'm Betsy Hollenbach. I'm the deputy assessor in Hillsborough Township. Hillsborough, like most of Somerset County, runs an annual reassessment program, which means that once every five years, an inspector will come to your property to inspect the interior and exterior. Prior to them coming to the property, you will receive a letter from our office stating that the inspector will be there in the following weeks. The letter will also state that if you prefer to call our office and set up a particular appointment, you may certainly do so. When the inspection is performed, the inspector will walk through the property with you and confirm that the information we have is accurate. Once the inspection interior is done, they will perform the outside by taking measurements of the exterior of the property and any exterior amenities. They will also take a picture of the exterior of the home. The inspection will take approximately 10 to 15 minutes, depending on the size of the property. If you're not home, or it is not a good time when the inspector arrives, they will leave a note, and you can contact our office to make an appointment at an exact time. If an interior inspection is not performed, the property will be estimated following the state guidelines, and it may not reflect the true attributes of your property, which affects the assessed value. As the assessor mentioned, please visit our website for more details and information regarding frequently asked questions. Go to hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below.
Welcome to the assessor's office. I'm Deborah Blaney, the Hillsborough Assessor. In this department, we are responsible for valuing all the properties within Hillsborough Township. We implement an annual reassessment program that is approved by the State Division of Taxation. All properties are inspected once every five years, but the property values can change every year based on market trends. The deputy assessor will give more specifics on what is involved in a reassessment inspection, and you can also refer to our webpage and check out our FAQ and reference to the program. There is also a link to the current tax list, where you can look up the value of all properties within Hillsborough. Another function of our office is to distribute and accept applications for deductions such as qualifying veterans, seniors, disabled veterans, and several other deductions. Please visit our webpage to see if you qualify for any deductions. Lastly, I would like to mention that the assessor's department is not associated with tax payments and tax bills. If you need assistance with tax payments, we will refer you to the collector's office. For more information, go to hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below. Now, the deputy assessor will discuss what is involved with a reassessment inspection of your property.
Hi, I'm Betsy Hollenbach. I'm the deputy assessor in Hillsborough Township. Hillsborough, like most of Somerset County, runs an annual reassessment program, which means that once every five years, an inspector will come to your property to inspect the interior and exterior. Prior to them coming to the property, you will receive a letter from our office stating that the inspector will be there in the following weeks. The letter will also state that if you prefer to call our office and set up a particular appointment, you may certainly do so. When the inspection is performed, the inspector will walk through the property with you and confirm that the information we have is accurate. Once the inspection interior is done, they will perform the outside by taking measurements of the exterior of the property and any exterior amenities. They will also take a picture of the exterior of the home. The inspection will take approximately 10 to 15 minutes, depending on the size of the property. If you're not home, or it is not a good time when the inspector arrives, they will leave a note, and you can contact our office to make an appointment at an exact time. If an interior inspection is not performed, the property will be estimated following the state guidelines, and it may not reflect the true attributes of your property, which affects the assessed value. As the assessor mentioned, please visit our website for more details and information regarding frequently asked questions.
Hi, my name is Susannah Karas, and I'm the Director of Sustainability at Hillsborough Township. The Sustainability Department creates initiatives to engage and educate the public on maintaining a healthy planet environmentally, socially, and economically for future generations to thrive in.
My name is Sam, and I'm the Office Administrator for the Hillsborough Sustainability Office. Our office also handles the township's yearly certification process through Sustainable Jersey, where we have been certified for our sustainability actions and initiatives since 2009. Hillsborough Township has been certified silver over six years straight. You can go to our website, sustainablehillsborough.com, for more information. Our office is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Hello, my name is Shelley Capell, and I'm the Office Administrator of the Engineering Department. I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce you to the Hillsborough Engineering Permit Applications that are located on the Hillsborough Township website under Engineering. First is the Engineering General Permit Application. This is for new structures, such as garages and pole barns, first-floor additions, driveway expansions, and in-ground pools. The instructions and fees are listed on the application, along with the grading example which is needed with the application. Second is the Road and Public Space Opening Permit Application. This is needed if you're expanding your driveway at the entrance by the roadway and any work that is done in the area from the curb and measuring back 10 feet, which is called the right-of-way. The last application I would like to discuss is the Soil Import Application. If you're regrading your property, you'll need to submit a grading sketch. And if you plan on importing soil from outside of Hillsborough, you're required to submit lab results indicating that the soil is not contaminated. This and all of our permits are for your protection. If you would like to discuss any of these permits or any other inquiries, please feel free to contact the Hillsborough Township Engineering Department
And we have a hard stop at 10:30 p.m. this evening. Also, when it does come time to question or cross-examine any witnesses, I do encourage those who wish to do so, if you're able to, to line up against a wall. If there's any extenuating circumstances, you can raise your hand to get my attention. And if I don't see anyone lined up or raising their hand at that point, we will continue and move on to the next witness. So with that, we have Homestead Road LLC with file number of 21PB-25-MSPV. Time of decision, December 31st of this year. And when did we continue this from?
July 7th.
Oh, yeah. From October 6th, without further notice. So councillor, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Michael O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Corsini Warner, Gillespie O'Grodnick, and Fisher in Somerville on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC. Seated to my right is Craig Giannetti Esquire. He's with the Day Pitney Firm. He's co-counsel on this application.
For the record, again, Craig Giannetti, the law firm, Day Pitney, on behalf of Homestead, co-counsel with Mr. O'Grodnick, G I A N E T T I.
So as indicated, this application was deemed complete on March 15th. Hearings were held May 12th, July 7th, and adjournment request was requested on October 6th without further notice. This is an application seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, major subdivision approval necessary to demolish the existing buildings to construct two industrial buildings consisting of 368,995 square feet and 168,304 square feet, for a total of 537,299 square feet. Additional improvements include onsite parking, landscaping, lighting, utility stormwater management. Site, the subject property, is located in the Transitional Economic Development Zone, the T E C D Zone. The site consists of two parcels, Lot 32 and Lot 33 in Block 200.10. Site is located north of Homestead Road and comprises approximately totaling 88.45 acres. Site contains five existing buildings near the rear of the property. Majority of the remaining area consists of vacant undeveloped land. Property is bordered on the north and south by agricultural properties, on the east by residential properties, and on the west by Route 206 bypass and the C X X Railroad. Lot 32 is 68 acres and is vacant, is formerly housed a hog farm. Lot 33 is 20.38 and contains mixed uses, including commercial or residential. For the subdivision, the applicant is proposing to move the existing lot line to the west. There's currently, there are currently two lots. These are the lots separating 32 and 33, which will result in the following lot size modifications. Lot 32, existing is 68, proposed is 39. Lot 33, existing is 20.38, proposed is 49.10. For the preliminary and major site plan, Lot 32, which is the western lot, the applicant is proposing to construct 168,000-square-foot building, industrial building at the rear of the property with ancillary and accessory office space, parking, and loading areas. That structure would have two access points on Homestead Road. Lot 33, which is the eastern lot, again, is proposing to construct the 368,000-square-foot industrial building on the front side of the property with internal office space, parking on the street side, and loading operations to the rear of the building. That building would also have two access points on Homestead Road. As for the use standards, as noted in the planning report, warehousing, shipping, and receiving are listed as permitted principal uses in the T E C D Zone. Officers would be considered accessory uses to the warehousing use. Fiscal impact statement estimates that the proposed development would yield a net positive fiscal impact and a tax rate of approximately $1.1 million per year. For area, yard, and books standards, as noted in Mr. Maskey's April 29, 2022 report, subdivision lots are in conformance, far exceed the minimum requirements of the T E C D Zone. I will have our planner detail. And importantly, as for variances, after the two prior hearings, Mr. Ford's office, the applicant's engineer amended the site plan to remove all variance relief. Revised plans eliminated all C bulk variances and several design waivers, which will be further explained by our planner. With respect to the subdivision, there was a letter dated September 19th, 2022, where Mr. Bernstein, on behalf of the board, asked the applicant, quote, "address the request for the lot subdivision" before it goes further, as did the overall site plan application, close quote. My office prepared an objection to that requirement dated October 3rd, 2022, since the applicant had already met the burden of the proof of the subdivision by virtue of the applicant's engineering testimony and the township planner agreeing that the subdivision fully conforms. In any event, we're here tonight to first address the subdivision with our planner and address any and answer questions related to the subdivision slash lot line adjustment. Again, the township's planning memorandum indicates that the proposed subdivision fully conforms with all the bulk standards. NJSA 4055D-48 provides that the board, quote, "shall," unquote, grant preliminary subdivision approval if the proposed development complies with all the provisions of the applicable ordinances. Similarly, NJSA 55D-50A provides that final subdivision approval shall be granted if the detailed drawing specifications and estimates of the application conform to the standards of all applicable ordinances and the conditions of preliminary approval. As discussed at the hearing, this is a common place to hold a site plan contemporaneous with a subdivision. This subdivision doesn't require any relief from the board. NJSA, again, requires that if no variances required, the board must grant subdivision approval.
Excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Land, one of the objectors. It was my understanding that before we started addressing the subdivision issues, there were contamination and tree cutting and land clearing issues that needed to be addressed first.
This is my introduction, so I object to any testimony at this point from any objectors. This is my introduction, not really your time to speak.
Yeah, you got it. Okay. This is just an introduction.
I'm providing legal argument. So the municipal land use law, if no variance is required, board must grant the subdivision approval to a development application that complies with the design standards and other requirements of municipality subdivision ordinance in the MLUL. That's a quotation from Pizzo Mantin 137-NJ at 228. There's another case, Kluge v. Bridgewater Township Planning Board, 407-NJ Super, an appellate division case from 2009, which stated in its relevant part, open quote, "Because the new application complied with all the ordinances and required no variance or waiver, the board was required to approve it," close quote. "General purpose of the land use laws may be fully effectuated by municipalities through their incorporation and subdivision ordinances that provide clear standards to guide both property owners and planning boards." Again, quoting Pizzo Mantin 137-NJ at 230. "Procedurally perfecting the subdivision generally is a condition of approval so that such deeds, final pass, would be filed prior to this construction of the improvements as part of the compliance phase of the approval process." The subdivision application is properly heard simultaneously with major site plan, and there's no requirement in the MLUL or the township ordinances that an application has to go through subdivision and site plan separately. The Hillsborough Planning and Zoning Board routinely hear subdivision applications together with site plan applications. For example, in just my applications in the last few years, the applicant sought subdivision and site plan approval simultaneously in Brookhaven Lofts, Green Village, Avalon Bridgeway, Hillsborough Park at Jill Court, amongst other applications. Furthermore, the Hillsborough Ordinance provides at Section 18826, entitled "Simultaneous Review," open quote, "The approving authority shall have the power to review and approve or deny conditional uses or site plans simultaneously with a review for subdivision approval without the developer being required to make further application or the approving authority being required to hold further hearings," close quote. As requested in Mr. Bernstein's letter, we have our planner, Christina Zarrocophone, prepared to testify just as to the subdivision, and we reserve the applicant's right to finish planning testimony at the conclusion of the other witnesses when we get through traffic, operations, architecture, and then again, close with planning. Another issue that's come up, that's I think what we're about to discuss, is NJDEP approvals, any land disturbance from the farmer plowing the fields. The applicant received a memo from Mr. Coys to the planning board dated yesterday, December 7th, '22, that there was a recommendation that, quote, "the board should take no action until the NJDEP issues are resolved," close quote. The applicant formally objects to the board refusing to continue hearings on application until resolution of any NJDEP issues or any other outside agency issues or approvals. Refusing to consider, or in this case, a pending complete application while awaiting outside agency approval has been routinely and unanimously rejected by our New Jersey Supreme Court, which held under NJSA 4055D-48C that a board must act within the statute. Supreme Court, which held under NJSA 4055D-48C that a board must act within the statute of time period and may not defer decision-making pending resolution of development issues for outside agency approvals. The seminal case regarding this issue is Manalapan Holding versus Planning Board of Hamilton. It's instructive, the court is instructive on this issue specifically. In Manalapan, the Hamilton Planning Board refused to hear an application until there was an approval from an outside agency to wit the county planning board. And the Supreme Court held that, open quote, "A municipality can conditionally approve a development application pending a favorable county review or deny an application, but it cannot defer action to await county approval," argued by retired Judge Doug Wolfson in 1983. That's 92 NJ 466. This concept is then codified in the municipal land use law under NJSA 40:55D-22B, which provides for board approval conditioned on approvals by other governmental agencies. 4055D-22 entitled conditional approval states under subsection B, "In the event that a development proposed by an application for development requires an approval by a governmental agency other than the municipality itself, the municipal agency shall, in appropriate circumstance, conditions its approval on subsequent approval upon the subsequent approval of such government agency, provided that the municipality shall make the decision of any application for development within the time prescribed, provided in this act, or with an extension of such period as been agreed to by the applicant unless the municipality, municipal agency is prevented or relieved from acting by operation of law." In Dowell Associates versus Harmony Township, 403 NJ SUPER, won, the appellate division court ruled that a permitting necessary for septic treatment was preempted by DEP and was not in the jurisdiction of the planning board. As this board is well aware, every application is subject to a myriad of outside agency approvals. Other entities, county, state, and federal, have exclusive jurisdiction over certain aspects of a particular land use. Thus, the county planning board has powers enumerated pursuant to NJS 40:27-1 et cetera. Soil erosion and sediment control plan must be approved for certain applications in accordance with NJSA 4:24-39 et cetera. Compliance with regulations enacted for flood control are governed under NJSA 58:16A-50 et cetera, and subsection 8 of the Water Quality Watershed Management Rules, NJAC 7:15-8.1, 715-8.2, and of course, the Freshlands Wetlands Protection Act under New Jersey Statute Annotated It's important for the purposes of this discussion to emphasize that boards function in only one sphere of land use regulation, and in many cases, even if relief is granted, the land in question may still not be legally used for the proposed use if it fails to comply with other requirements of law and regulations since these outside agencies have exclusive jurisdiction. As such, NJDEP approvals necessary for this development should be a condition of approval, not a precondition to hear or suspend this application. Courts have routinely held that boards may not act on matters which, under the exclusive jurisdiction of another agency, whether municipal, county, state, or federal. For another example, as in the case before the ward, a planning board may have legitimate environmental concerns about the development of the property, but it may not deny an application for site plan approval on the basis of that concern, as NJDEP has a superseding and exclusive jurisdiction. Case in point, Stockle v. Planning Board of Edison, 348 NJ SUPER 635. It's a law division case from 2000. Court held that a planning board could not consider the impact of a development on a wetland of the subject property because such impact is within the exclusive jurisdiction of DEP pursuant to the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act, NJSA 139B1 et cetera. Stockle Court indicated that the board's only power was to condition its approval on a developer's receipt of approval from NJDEP. We agree with that and don't dispute that. The court held that, quote, "Any impact on a pond or wetlands in a proposed site plan development falls within the exclusive jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act. That act preempts all laws and ordinances that attempt to regulate freshwater wetlands." Should also be noted that many projects proceed with NJDEP violations pending. In fact, Brownfield's application almost only, always have open DEP notices of violation. Furthermore, to my knowledge, this board has never suspended the consideration of an application based upon an NJDEP notice of violation, which in this case is a potential notice of violation. In fact, as of today, there are no pending violations. As indicated in my prior communications with the board, the applicant simply requests an opportunity to timely present this application to conclusion for both the subdivision and the site plan prior to board action or voting. Remaining witnesses include traffic, architecture, operations, and planning. So with me tonight, I have Ms. Cofone and...
Well, before we get to whether it's Ms. Cofone or somebody else, counselor, and I'm assuming Mr. Giannetti going to say anything, or is he sitting looking?
Not yet.
I think the three objectors should make any comments they wish to make as to Mr. O'Grady's legal argument. So any or all, don't all rush up. Mr. Tarantino, I guess you're first, state for the record.
Yeah, Brian Tarantino.
You raise the mic up a little bit.
Brian, pull the, just pull the mic out of the thing, thank you.
Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane, one of the objectors. As I've reminded everyone, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that on the plain argument here, Mr. O'Grady, that you're making, you're talking about approvals, and in this particular case, we're talking about activities going on that appear to substantially change the conditions of the site and the conditions of the site as they were represented to the board and to the public. And, and I think that Mr. Coys' memo rightly says, as it relates to the active planning board application and the amended plans, "We have significant concerns about the current, quote, 'farm fields,' being shown as such due to the ongoing issues, whether they have any approvals, to disturb any environmental area, including but not limited to the township's stream corridor." So it's not just, hey, we're waiting for the DEP to approve. We're actually waiting for the, it's appropriate to get a complete understanding of what actually occurred in terms of dumping, in terms of tree cutting, and other, other land disturbance. Another way to look at it would be to say, the application as represented to the board is no longer valid because it no longer really represents what's out there.
And, and let me respond to that, and I'm, I'm sorry I omitted this in my introduction. So once the farmer plowed the fields, we understand that complaints were made to DEP. We understand that several inspections were conducted by the municipal officials and also NJDEP. And the applicant was asked to resurvey the property. Pam Matthews, who you heard from earlier, is our surveyor on this case. She's also a professional engineer with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, and she and her team spent many hours resurveying the entire property. We've resubmitted plans that reflect the current existing conditions based upon the new surveys. So it's, it's on file at the, I would say, middle, end of November, we've resubmitted the existing site conditions to address the board, the board and the board engineers' concerns of whether there are any alterations from what was submitted. And the result of that is, is that there's, that there's nothing that's going to impact our development.
So, so the, it wasn't, I actually object to your characterization of the farmer, quote, "plowing the fields." He was clearing the land. They, the, the concern was that it actually didn't qualify as, you know, for the, for the farm assessment. So he was actually doing land clearing, and, and there's some excellent photos of significant number of trees being cut down. I didn't see that being addressed in your resurvey. You just said, hey, it looks the same, and it was a, so I, I don't think that that, even though you are representing that you spent hours or the surveyor spent hours doing it, it's not clear at all that, that what we have out there is what is represented in the file. The, the issue before us is, we don't have a good picture about what is going on at the site, and therefore, making arguments about subdivisions, making, you know, testimony about different aspects of, of the application really doesn't, it, it's, it doesn't apply. Those things need to be addressed first. It's not just approvals. It's actually serious, not...
If I may, so it's been submitted to the board that was requested from the board professionals, disturbance maps showing what has been disturbed with the activity that occurred. It showed no change in the grading, no change in the topography. It does not change our application. And keep in mind, the stop work order relates to the property owner and his farmer activities. It has nothing to do with this application. If there's any violation issued by the DEP, it's not being issued to the applicant. It would probably be issued to the property owner, as was their activity, not our activity. All we had to demonstrate to the board at their request was, was there any change to your grading plan that was submitted as part of the application, which there was not. We submitted the information to the board. If you do not understand it, or the public doesn't understand or have a clear understanding, we can't control that, but we have an opportunity to proceed with our application as it is, it doesn't relate to what the violation, which hasn't been issued yet.
So, so did, does your application, does or does not your application indicate the number of the current trees on the site?
Does the application indicate the current number of trees on the site? And as does the revised documents that were submitted, all the exhibits show the trees on the site as well as...
No, the number of trees. Did you revise that part of your application? Because there's fewer trees now.
If you're referring to the form, the plans on file with the board show the number of trees.
No, I'm referring to the commentary that, that describes the number of trees that are currently on the site. That's no longer correct because the farmer went out there and cut a bunch of trees down, and we have photographic evidence of it. So you're saying no disturbance, and it doesn't really matter, and it's, you know, we were going to cut those trees down anyway. So does that give you carte blanche? Like anybody, you know, the farmer could just cut down whatever tree he wants to cut down, and gee, it's no, no impact? You guys represented that there's X number of trees on the site. Now there aren't that many trees. Is that okay? Is it okay to do that?
And the revised plans that were submitted, the disturbance pans show that, so...
It shows the number of trees cut down?
It shows the disturbed area. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
Well, the number of trees matter because it, because the number, the number of trees that are going to be cleared have to be offset. I'm not an expert in this, but the number of trees matters. How many trees are going to be cleared does matter.
When we go through our civil engineering testimony in connection with the site plan, we will have that information testified to.
But my point is...
But with respect to the subdivision that they asked us to proceed with first, it doesn't relate to that. And again, and even as Mr. Bernstein, let me finish, as Mr. Bernstein noted, this is not even a subdivision, this is a lot line adjustment. The board asked for us to present testimony as to that. Our engineer testified as to the subdivision previously. We have our planner here this evening to testify as to the subdivision in its conformance. We do not have a traffic engineer available or our architect available, and unfortunately, Mr. Ford wasn't feeling well and won't be here to be able to provide testimony as to the site plan this evening, but we will continue to another meeting. There will be civil engineering testimony provided as to the site plan, as to the clearing, as to any disturbance.
My understanding is that we needed, that, that Mr. Bernstein requested that the issues related to the illegal dumping on the site and the tree clearing be addressed before the subdivision issue be addressed. And I agree and think that's the way it should go.
Well, they, they were, they were addressed. We went back to the Environmental Commission. We've provided thousands of pages of documents with the, with the environmental investigations. Anybody can go on Civic Clerk and read exactly what the environmental conditions are, the open cases, et cetera, but that has, it's not relevant to a subdivision application.
Well, actually, for purposes of the record, Mr. O'Grady, you've asked my office to reconsider the situation of whether we need Ms. Cofone to testify on the subdivision prior to the application being completed, correct?
We, I wrote you a letter indicating that we object to...
Right.
...having a essentially bifurcated application with a subdivision going first.
You've also raised with my office, subject to Mr. Coys' memo, which by the way, was a response to your memo to the township indicating there is nothing there, there, i.e. there are no violations, there are no violation numbers, et cetera, was now for the board to consider whether or not we can place the application in abeyance, in whichever form it is to take, pending the outcome of DEP related to Mr. Coys' memo. You've made your argument, well, I mean, may I?
Sure.
You've made your argument. Mr. Tarantino is making his. I don't know if he has any more to add on this issue. Do you?
Only, only to reiterate that I really agree with Mr. Coys that, given what has happened on the site, it makes no sense to proceed with any kind of testimony or decision making on any topic related to this application until those things are resolved.
Mr. Giannetti, don't.
Excuse me?
You don't need to add any more to the comments right now. What I'm looking for now is either of the other two objectors have any comments for the record on this issue. I would like to take a few minutes to have a conversation with the chair, the vice chair, and the mayor regarding these arguments, and we'll be back in a few minutes to address the requests made by applicants, counsel, and the comments from, from the objector. Figure five.
Hello, my name is Shelley Capel, and I'm the office administrator of the Engineering Department. I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce you to the Hillsborough Engineering Permit Applications that are located on the Hillsborough Township website under Engineering. First is the Engineering General Permit Application. This is for new structures such as garages and pole barns, first-floor additions, driveway expansions, and in-ground pools. The instructions and fees are listed on the application along with the grading example which is needed with the application. Second is the Road and Public Space Opening Permit Application. This is needed if you're expanding your driveway at the entrance by the roadway and any work that is done in the area from the curb and measuring back 10 feet, which is called the right-of-way. The last application I would like to discuss is the Soil Import Application. If you're regrading your property, you'll need to submit a grading sketch, and if you plan on importing soil from outside of Hillsborough, you're required to submit lab results indicating that the soil is not contaminated. This and all of our permits are for your protection. If you would like to discuss any of these permits or have any other inquiries, please feel free to contact the Hillsborough Township Engineering Department anytime at hillsborough-nj.org or click on the link below. Welcome to the assessor's office. I'm Deborah Blaney, the Hillsborough Assessor. In this department, we are responsible for valuing all the properties within Hillsborough Township. We implement an annual reassessment program that is approved by the State Division of Taxation. All properties are inspected once every five years, but the property values can change every year based on market trends. The deputy assessor will give more specifics on what is involved in a reassessment inspection, and you can also refer to our webpage and check out our FAQ and reference to the program. There is also a link to the current tax list where you can look up the value of all properties within Hillsborough. Another function of our office is to distribute and accept applications for deductions such as qualifying veterans, seniors, disabled veterans, and several other deductions. Please visit our webpage to see if you qualify for any deduction.
Please visit our webpage to see if you qualify for any deductions. Lastly, I would like to mention that the assessor's department is not associated with tax payments and tax bills. If you need assistance with tax payments, we will refer you to the collector's office. For more information, go to hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below. Now, the deputy assessor will discuss what is involved with the reassessment inspection of your property.
Hi, I'm Betsy Hollenbach. I'm the deputy assessor in Hillsborough Township. Hillsborough, like most of Somerset County, runs an annual reassessment program, which means that once every five years, an inspector will come to your property to inspect the interior and exterior. Prior to them coming to the property, you will receive a letter from our office stating that the inspector will be there in the following weeks. The letter will also state that if you prefer to call our office and set up a particular appointment, you may certainly do so. When the inspection is performed, the inspector will walk through the property with you and confirm that the information we have is accurate. Once the inspection interior is done, they will perform the outside by taking measurements of the exterior of the property and any exterior amenities. They will also take a picture of the exterior of the home. The inspection will take approximately 10 to 15 minutes, depending on the size of the property. If you're not home, or it is not a good time when the inspector arrives, they will leave a note, and you can contact our office to make an appointment at an exact time. If an interior inspection is not performed, the property will be estimated following the state guidelines, and it may not reflect the true attributes of your property, which affects the assessed value. As the assessor mentioned, please visit our website for more details and information regarding frequently asked questions. Go to hillsborough-nj.org or click on the links below.
Guys, ready? Okay. He's here. Frank came back. Okay, we're on. And Eric, do you want to?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of the record, after hearing the arguments, I will also indicate that I had a conversation with Mr. O'Grady earlier today in which he berated me. So that everybody should not feel that I'm somehow playing one side versus the other. I get berated by everybody, including raising the issue of the Minnaleban Realty Hamilton Township Planning Board case, and I also did look at the Supreme Court decision related there, too. For purposes of the record, the differentiation between who's responsible for what's going on out there and whose application is before this board is somewhat immaterial. There is a problem out there that the DEP is investigating. I understand the argument made by counsel related to the fact that we cannot hold off items while there is a potential pending DEP investigation as it relates to the application. One of the rationales that has been raised by some of the objectors in writing, not so much here tonight, is the issue of what will happen if ultimately there is a decision rendered by DEP that may place an impact upon the application that's currently before the board. And that, folks, is the risk that the applicant takes in pursuing the application. If the board, and it's my recommendation, folks, that this matter go forward with the understanding that it is going forward for the purposes of testimony, what the board ultimately will do relative to the application and the impact that the DEP investigation may or may not have and related items will be taken in as factors depending on what's before the board prior to the conclusion of this application, whether it is the property owner's obligation or the applicant's obligation or both obligations, it really doesn't matter. The public should not misconstrue the fact that testimony is going forward as somehow a tacit approval or a not-so-tacit approval by my office of this application, far from it. What it is, is to avoid, at least at the moment, providing Mr. Giannetti with, and myself, with more income than we necessarily need to have relative to what I suspect would be a legal challenge as to whether the board would in fact have the right to stop this hearing at this time. This is not a recommendation to approve the, approve the application. This is not a recommendation to approve the subdivision lot line change or whatever else Ms. Cofone is or is not going to testify to tonight, assuming Ms. Cofone is testifying tonight, because we are not necessarily going to ultimately make a decision on lot line issues as part of this as well because of the changing situation on the land. And therefore, it is my recommendation to the board that applicant go forward with his application in the manner means upon which he wants to go forward with this application, with the understanding that going forward does not mean in any way, shape, or form that this board approves any of the proposal in its current form or whatever form it ultimately takes.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Therefore, that is my recommendation to the board. It's up to the board whether or not they wish to follow my advice as I indicated to Mr. O'Grady when he asked me what the board was going to do, and the answer was, I only give advice, Michael. I don't tell them what to do contrary to public belief.
Okay. So, board members, does anyone object with the applicant going forward? Silence means no objections to me, so Mr. O'Grady?
O'Grady, as I said, your clients are aware they're going forward at their risk.
Yes, we understand that.
And Mr. Bernstein, just before I give my seat to Ms. Cofone, who will be our next witness, with respect to the comments as to, obviously, the board wanting to hear subdivision testimony first and address the subdivision, to be clear, are you expecting the board to vote on the subdivision before it was just provide the testimony and then would move on to the site plan?
Based on what has occurred subsequent to the original request relative to DEP and related items, it, the board, our recommendation is the board take no action vis-à-vis the lot line subdivision or any related item to until future, a future date.
But we will be allowed to proceed with the site plan application or presentation at the next meeting.
Whichever way Mr. O'Grady wants, I believe Ms. Cofone is coming because, one, if we turn the lights out, we'll be able to see Ms. Cofone.
Why?
And secondly, and more importantly, I believe that Ms. Cofone is the only individual here tonight to testify. Is that correct?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Ford is still very ill.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yes, he's been very sick.
It's the color of the outfit, Ms. Cofone.
Mr. Bernstein, are you throwing shade on my fall?
Last week, you were, last week, we did it with the mask. Today, we're like, zoom, you're better. Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got?
Yes.
State for the record, Ms. Cofone, your full name and spell your last.
My full name is Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F as in Frank, O-N-E. My business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200. Thank you. Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I am testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I have been qualified here in Hillsborough as well as probably about 450 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. I've been practicing for 27 years as an expert witness. My licenses are current and valid. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services.
Hey, nothing's changed since last Thursday.
Nothing. Oh, I testified, added any new talents? No, I don't think so. Some more appearances, no new talents.
Please proceed.
We don't let the objectors have any questions they have as to the expert concept? Because you're producing Ms. Cofone as an expert witness, are you not?
I am.
Try not to, try not to choke on this all. Does any of the objectors have any questions of Ms. Cofone as it relates to her qualifications only? Seeing none, Mr. O'Grady. Pick 'em, Mike, and?
Ms. Cofone, is it correct that you were retained by the applicant Homestead Road LLC in your capacity as a professional licensed planner?
Yes.
And could you provide, go through the subdivision portion of this application as it relates to the T E C D bulk standards?
Certainly. So, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazzaro Cofone, this is a very straightforward issue relative to the lot line adjustment. Fortunately for the public and for the board, Mr. Maskey has outlined the relevant issues in his April 29, 2022 review letter governing the Homestead Road LLC application. Specifically, if you turn to that document on page two, he indicates under project summary, he states there are two parts to this application, a minor subdivision and a major site plan as outlined below. A, minor subdivision. The applicant is proposing to move the existing lot line, separating lots 32 and 33, an average of 810 feet to the west, resulting in the following lot size modifications. Lot 32, existing 68.06 acres, proposed 39.34 acres. Lot 33, existing 20.38 acres, proposed 49.10 acres. That is not my interpretation of Mr. Maskey's statement. That is a direct read of Mr. Maskey's statement in his April 29, 2222 correspondence. While it is not my interpretation, I certainly agree with it that this is a simply, with regard to the subdivision, is an application to move the existing lot line, create, there's two lots that are existing, there's two lots that are proposed, we're simply moving a lot line on paper. His report, skipping over the major site plan because we haven't gotten to that part in my testimony at least yet, section four of his review letter, area, yard, and bulk standards, the project is in conformance with the T E C requirements outlined in the table below. Now, the T E C D, as this board well knows and the public well knows, is the subject property that the application is located in. So the T E C Z zone, like all of our other zones, have standards for them. Those standards are with required to minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and minimum lot depth. Those are the standards that we would be concerned with to create a lot. I'm not going to talk about setbacks, I'm not going to talk about coverages, because we're simply talking about the creation of the lots. Mr. Maskey affirmatively states in his review that the project is in conformance with the T E C D requirements outlined in the table below. Again, that is not my interpretation of his statement, that is not my opinion on his statement, that is his statement in his review letter governing the Homestead LLC, Homestead Road LLC application, and I agree with it. And the reason I agree with it is because when you look at the standards in the T E C D zoning district, they are in the township's zoning ordinance, but they are also recited on page three of Mr. Maskey's report, they're also found in the table and the plans associated with this application. Minimum lot area is five acres. For proposed lot 32, we're at 39.34 acres. Proposed lot 33 is 49.10 acres. Minimum lot width required is 200 feet. For proposed lot 32, we're at 1,009.7 feet. Proposed lot 33, 2,002.4 feet. Minimum lot depth, 250 feet. Proposed lot 32 is 1,573.4. Proposed lot 33 is 997.2 feet. When you look at those standards, it is very easy to see how Mr. Maskey comes to the conclusion that the project is in conformance with the T E C D requirements outlined in the table below, and further that the applicant is simply proposing to move the existing lot line and that no variance relief is required to accomplish that. So that is my direct testimony with respect to the lot line adjustment. I concur with the conclusions reached by your planning director in his review of this application, and I believe that the lot line adjustment results in the continuation of two conforming lots associated with this application.
Ms. Cofone, there's no other relief by way of design waivers or exceptions related to the subdivision, is that correct?
No. I mean, is it correct? Yes, there's no, yes, it's correct, there are no waivers or relief.
Thank you. I have no further questions for the witness.
David, anything to add to Mr. Maskey's original assessment? Or along those lines? No? I have nothing to add. Okay.
Nothing to add. I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir? You're not asking me a question.
Ms. Cofone, what's the, why is the applicant requesting a lot line change?
I think that question is probably best of ours to the applicant. It's part of the application.
Has the applicant indicated to you why they sought the change in question?
They have not.
I can ask a question?
So, without the lot line change, the lots are conforming. There's really no reason to change the lot to make them conform, they're conforming as is now.
The resulting lots conform, and the motivation, I mean, there's no standard in the municipal land use law for what motivates an applicant to file an application. The applicant has to be judged by the standards in the zoning ordinance. So there's nothing in the T E C D zone that governs what motivates the applicant. The applicant is governed by the specific bulk criteria, and that is what's outlined on Mr. Maskey's report in page three. So what is motivating the applicant to file a conforming lot line adjustment is not something that's governed by the zoning ordinance.
That's not what I asked. I asked if the lots were conforming as is before the lot line change.
Are the lots conforming? I believe that they are. They're certainly conforming with respect to area.
Right.
Yes, they are conforming with respect to area, for sure.
And the members of the board? So.
Objectors, objectors.
No, I don't get to ask a question?
You don't have a question, be my guest, but after you, the objectors.
Yes. Right. So with moving the lot line or the reconfiguration, from a planning perspective, what is the advantage of doing something like this from what it is currently?
Well, typically, when you would do an application and you subdivide it, it's to allow for the ultimate development of the property. So at some point, the applicant will proceed with the site plan application and hopefully develop this property in conformance with the T E C D zone. I think we need to perhaps consider the fact that the stated purpose of the T E C D zone is, the purpose of the T E C D Transitional Economic Development District is to provide transitional employment generating development between the high-intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby residential developments. So this is a district that was specifically created with a purpose. Now, again, that comes right out of one, section 188, 107 dot two T E C D D. That's not my interpretation of the stated purpose of the zone. That's verbatim recitation of the purpose of this zone in the Hillsborough zoning ordinance. So it's not my opinion on what the purpose of that zone, that is the purpose of this zone. So ultimately, the subdivision should lead to the development of transitional employment generating development between the high-intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby residential development. Since that's what this zone was created to do, I am hopeful that as a planner implementing the zone plan, that that's what the subdivision will lead to.
Okay. And the original lots right now, as they currently are configured, do you think that those could be developed in accordance with the T E C D standard?
Could they? Probably. And again, that's not the standard against which the subdivision.
No, 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 I just.
The standard against which the subdivision is judged and if the applicant is entitled to it is, can you develop a property without it? That's not, that's not a standard to evaluate a subdivision, at least as far as I'm concerned.
No, I think we're just trying to get clear, you know, perhaps, you know, is there a need or motivation to be able to develop in accordance to the zone that's present there now?
Understood.
Okay, I have no further, so I will open up to the objectors. And again, it's just a reminder, cross-examining and questioning her testimony that she just provided.
Name first.
Name first.
Oh, again, Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. Hi, hi, everybody. So, does the applicant have contracts of sale from each of the property owners?
I think that question is appropriately not asked of our professional planners. That would be a question for the applicant.
If she can answer.
Oh, the contract of sales for the purchase?
Yeah.
Yes.
So they're contract purchasers. The contract for the applicant to buy the two properties?
That's correct. They're considered contract purchasers. It's contingent on these approvals.
And are those, are those contracts in the, in the record?
I don't think so, and I don't believe we're required to produce them.
It's a standard that you applied to the previous.
That's incorrect. The question to the last applicant was.
Excuse me a second. That was a standard that you applied to the, to the previous hearing, the previous application.
No. So the last application was. It was just the, the prior. It was just the, the prior applicant. The board had a question with respect to owner authorization. So, as a part of any land use application and land you don't own, you have to receive approval from the landowner to file a land use application. So, we've done that. We've complied with that. We've submitted signatures that, that memorialize that this, that the owners of these two lots have authorized and approved the filing of this land use application.
Okay.
Either of the other objectors have any comments? No?
No. So, a motion to open the public?
I'll move.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, if everyone, whoever wants to come up and to move the process along quickly, if you're able to, please, you know, line up along the wall. And again, state your name and address for the record. And again, all questions go towards the planner.
I'm not sure these do. My name is Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road.
Mr. Martin, can I make a suggestion to you and everybody else who's coming over so you all don't look like you've been hunched over? Just pull the microphone out of the... No, you don't even have to just, just pull the microphone out and bring it to you, and that will make everything easier.
All right. Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road. The T E C D zone was originally zoned, zoned CDZ, Corporate Development. When it was finalized, that there would be no major highway or expressway, only the bypass.
Talk up a little, Mr. Martin, please.
Only bypass with no intersection on Homestead Road. It was determined that the CDZ's, with its 50-acre minimum development requirement, was no longer feasible. Thirty-six lots were changed from CDZ to ag, agricultural. This is the over 1,000 acres of preserved farmland and open space that is across from this T E C D zone. The first proposal for this zone was to change it from CDZ to light industrial. There was a planning board meeting that had so many complaints about this from the residents that the idea was tabled. On December 9, 2010, the planning board proposed the new T E C D, or Transitional Economic Development Zone. The following is a quote from that meeting. "The constraints of the current CDZ zone are that you would have to have a 50-acre lot in order to develop the property. Only one of those lots conforms to this at this time. The township is in a position of trying to determine what reasonable transitional use could occur between the CDZ and the LI and the nearby residential areas." The meeting was used for the basis of a new master plan amendment. The master plan amendment land use of December 9, 2010, quote, "As a result of the concerns raised, it was determined that a master plan amendment should be prepared and reviewed by the planning board in order to provide a comprehensive recommendation as to the basis for which future zone change may be considered. Under planning considerations at that meeting, first, does not permit uses which are not compatible with the residential uses and limiting potential nuisances such as lighting and noise. Second, it is noted that the minimum 50-acre lot size requirement for the development in the CDZ district and the lack of a major highway access makes future development very difficult as presently zoned. It is also noted, this is number three, it is also noted that most properties in the study area have been preserved, leaving only a few remaining properties for potential development. Therefore, it is recommended that a new land use/zone designation should be considered, which would serve as transition between the existing neighbor, nearby residential development and the more intense development permitted in the LI district to the west."
Mr. Martin, I'm going to, do you have a question for the witness?
Yes.
Okay.
Under goals and objectives, number one, encourage the development of employment areas near residential neighborhoods with design that assures the peace and solitude of the residents. Provide for employment centers close to residential development to reduce vehicular traffic and encourage alternative modes of transportation. The problem was that the lots were too big to develop, and tonight you want to increase one lot to twice its size, to twice its original size to accommodate this development. Seems to me that this tractor-trailer warehouse complex and potential distribution center is larger and more intense than anything in the LI district. Can you tell me, here's my question. Can you tell me how this development is transitional between the LI and nearby residential loans?
So, we're not here to speak about the development. We're not at that part. We're here to speak about the lot line adjustment and the lots comply with the T E C D zone requirements.
Yeah, I'll just make it clear that there will be discussion from the planner on the topic that you were just asking about. This is, her testimony is strictly about the reconfiguration of the two lots, but there will be an opportunity to question the relevancy.
Grant Colmer, Taylor Avenue. This is somewhat a question from the last applicant when we, when you were hearing about a line adjustment, which is the perpetuity in the future. So, some of your questions, Mr. Raji, I was understanding. I would like to know a little bit more, just in terms of with the subdivision, as a, as an expert in planning, could this increase development if the lot was not changed? It's speculative, I understand, but I think the subsequent question is like, hey, you're going to do this, now you can do more. And I, and that's the same thing that we were just hearing in the prior application of what would happen if we do this? And in the future, what will this cause for the development of the property?
For starters, I don't think it's fair to parallel this to any other application. Each application has to rise and fall on its own. So, it's not fair to...
Did you hit the button?
To any other application. Each application has to rise and fall.
Okay, wait there, is that better? Okay. For the third time. So, it is not fair to judge this application on the application that was prior. I was not part of that's application. I didn't review it. I did sit here and listen to some of it, but, you know, what transpires in one application has absolutely no bearing on another, unless it's an interpretation, which neither one of those were. So, that has no bearing on this application. If I understand your question correctly, it was, does this lot line adjustment increase the opportunity to develop the potential of the property? My answer to that is, the applicant has to be governed by the T E C D standards. In the T E C D standards, there are requirements for impervious coverage, building height, number of stories, buffers. Those are the things that are going to regulate the density and the intensity of any ultimate development on this property. So, as long as the applicant complies with the underlying zoning, the development intensity should presumptively be as envisioned by the T E C D zoning district.
As a, I don't know if that didn't really quite get to it. So, possibly. As a planner, what are maybe the pitfalls or benefits do you see in making such subdivision for future development or not?
What are the benefits? Well, again, the...
And pitfalls? And pitfalls.
The T E C D zone calls for development. It calls for job generating, creation of job generating uses. As far as pitfalls, I'm challenged as a planner to find pitfalls associated with a conforming application. You're welcome.
Maria Chanis, 672 East Brick Avenue. Could you tell me once again what the existing size is of lot 32 and what's proposed?
Just making sure it's on, so I get it right the first time. Lot 32 is existing at 68.06 acres and is proposed at 39.34 acres.
And lot 33, existing and proposed? And the existing lot 33, what is, what is existing and what is proposed?
20.38 acres is existing for lot 33 and 49.10 acres is proposed.
When these lot lines are adjusted, what impact does it have on what's on those properties right now? Because this, this property, I think there's a gas pipeline easement. There's, there are other, I think, easements and existing conditions. So, how, how is that changed when you change these lot lines? When you increase the one property and decrease the other property? What's, what's, what's going on as far as what's on those properties?
I, I think that question is better directed to Mr. Ford, our civil engineer, who already testified as to this. But to answer your question, it's a complete demolition of the existing structures on these two subject properties and a redevelopment of the site.
Okay, so it's demolition of existing structures. But what about what's going on under the ground? Because you've got pipelines and you're going to be accessing certain areas. And I, I think that you're going to be crossing the pipeline. And I think there are a few other things that, that's in the verbatim. So, what, who's going to give us information as to how that's going to change once these lot lines are changed?
Mr. Ford would be the, the correct professional to inquire as to the, any, any impacts to the underground gas line easements. But I don't believe there's any impacts.
Okay, so he's going to be here to, to answer questions?
He will be reintroduced as our professional engineer because plans were revised to eliminate variances and waivers. So, Mr. Ford will testify as to the amendments made after the July 7 hearing that eliminate the relief that we had previously requested as part of this application.
Mr. O'Grardnick? Would you ask Mr. Ford, when he comes back to testify, if he can answer Ms. Chanis's questions when he comes, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And you'll have opportunity to ask other questions also? Or it's just to what's been revised?
That's up to the board.
That's up to the questions.
You'll have opportunity to ask questions.
All right, thank you.
That wasn't my fault.
John Lanahan, 43 Wyandotte Way. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, understanding everybody's lane here. So, as the professional planner, you're giving an opinion on the subdivision, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I've heard a lot tonight about the, still waiting for what we don't, what we know is what we don't know. We don't know what the DEP findings are going to be, the investigation, yada, yada, yada. Does that in any way impact the subdivision analysis, what those findings may be? Or is that unrelated to the subdivision? I'm trying to understand the nexus between the two. Is there a connection between the subdivision opinion and the DEP findings?
In my opinion, they're unrelated.
Is that because the DEP findings never impacted? Or because we don't know what the findings are going to be yet?
In my opinion, it's because there's a lot line adjustment that conforms with the underlying ordinance requirements.
So, there's nothing in the DEP findings, in your experience or your opinion, that would impact the lot lines?
Relative to this application, no.
Okay, but we don't know what those findings are yet, correct?
They are still pending.
Okay, so I guess this is where I'm kind of now, I want to make sure that I'm following the bouncing ball here. Applicants proceeding at their own risk, subject to DEP findings. Mr. Coy's memo suggested or recommended we don't go forward because those findings may impact, I thought I read, the subdivision. And I believe Mr. Bernstein's letters also at one point referenced the subdivision as well application. So, I'm still trying to understand. If the DEP findings don't impact the subdivision application or the opinion, where is the issue? What, it seems that as if we're giving an opinion that may be a qualified opinion, because we don't know yet. Now, we know more than we knew before, right? We know there's a case number. We know there's findings out there. They're coming. There's another investigation. So, I guess my question is, do those things never create a qualified opinion? Or forgive me for using the kind of the audit financial parlance, but is there such a thing for the land planners? Is it, would be a qualified opinion now that you know those things exist now, prior to a month ago, when apparently they didn't have the case number? We didn't know about the investigation. Does that in any way impact your opinion?
No.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Nia Thie Shah, 3D Run, Hillsborough.
Spell your last name, ma'am, for the record.
Yeah, S H A H.
Thank you.
Sure. So, just to understand a little bit more, and I know we're not trying to tie applications together, but the previous...
And don't.
Person that was here, just trying to understand one thing. The request was made that a site plan be submitted so that we can memorialize what's in the habitat, what's on the land, what exists, right? Even though it's just a lot line moving. Here, a bunch of trees were cut down. Things were changed. I understand the grade wasn't changed, but the land was changed. So, I'm wondering, does a change mean that a new application for subdivision should be submitted versus just amending what already exists?
Ms. Shah, the questions are to the, to the witness, not to us.
And, and we had submitted revised plans.
Yeah.
So, that, that addressed the board's concerns regarding... So, any application, one of the first things that an applicant does is generally, an engineering firm has their surveyor survey the land. So, we've complied, and, and it's set forth in the site plan ordinance, all the requirements of what you have to put on that site plan. And we've endeavored to comply with the site plan, not just the original submission, that also does include the proposed site plan conditions. But we've amended the existing conditions map to detail areas of disturbance based upon the farmer conducting his farming activities. We then met again with the Environmental Commission and had a lengthy meeting where we discussed the LSRP's involvement with respect to the existing contamination on one of the lots, as well as any other site disturbance. We've updated, we've, we've updated the existing site conditions to reflect what is out there today, post-farming activities.
Okay. Thank you for that. But I thought I heard earlier that the new revised plans that were submitted maybe does not have the number of, does not show the new number, like, the number of trees that were cut down. It does not show that change?
Yeah. Questions are for Ms. Cafone as relates to her testimony.
Sorry, I was replying to Mr. O'Grardnick. Cause he made a comment.
Mr. O'Grardnick isn't testifying.
Well, he answered, so can I continue with him?
He's not a witness. His, his quote statements on the record related to the application, with all due respect to Mr. O'Grardnick, have no bearing whatsoever on the board's determination as to this application. Unless he is testifying as an expert, and I must have missed that somewhere along the way. So, you can have a conversation with him to the extent that it has anything to do with Ms. Cafone's testimony, but for purposes of the record, it's not helping the record.
So, Ms. Cafone, I would just ask you, when you talk about the lot lines moving, would your plan include the number, like, show the number of trees that were cut down, the difference?
First of all, they're not my plans. Our team's plans will, at some point during the site plan phase, will ultimately show that information. I believe you'll ultimately have that information as the application progresses. It's not germane to the lot line, but at some point, you will have that information before the board. The board has ordinances in place that govern those type of things. So, at some point, that will be vetted before the board.
Okay. And just to find out when I can ask the board the questions that come next after that?
Yeah, and that is not for me to say.
When can I do that?
When the testimony goes on the record to address it.
Uh, sorry, what does that mean?
So, when they have their next, or their, their next witness that may discuss as part of their testimony,
as part of their testimony, you'll be able to ask those questions.
I guess, I think this is kind of like a egg and a chicken situation, but this part is about the subdivision issue and my question's about how the number of trees that were taken down affect whether this should count as a new application or an existing application. And I'm just wondering procedurally how, where to ask that question and how it all fits in, because right now we're at the subdivision point of the application. So I'm just, I'm not sure.
So you get two bites of the apple.
Yeah.
When there's a witness sitting in the, in the chair there-
Yeah.
-you get to ask the witness about the testimony that they gave.
Right.
At the end of the application, if you want to have questions about anything else, you have that opportunity.
Including asking the board questions?
You can ask questions of the board if, at that point?
Yeah.
Doesn't mean the board will answer. Doesn't mean, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tuyan Le for Ivy Lane, last name is spelled L E. Ms. Caphone, you stated that the two lots conform with respect to area. Is there, are there other factors where they do not conform?
No.
So they just, overall, they conform?
There's three standards in the ordinance for a lot area. I believe it's width and depth, and we comply with all of them. So it's lot area, lot width and lot depth. As Mr. Maskey indicates in his review, the project is in conformance with the T E C D requirements outlined in the table below. So there are no areas of non-compliance of the proposed lots with the T E C D standards.
Okay, so then, could you explain what outcome you are looking for by having the lot line change?
Ultimately, the applicant is looking to develop the property.
And so it requires the lot line change in order to develop the property?
I don't know that it's required in order to develop the applicant's property. The applicant is choosing to provide a layout that has the lot line adjustment.
Could you clarify why?
Again, I, I'm not here to testify on the applicant's motivation to file the application. It's a conforming lot line adjustment for uses and a program of development that is conforming with the T E C D standards. I'm not sure of any body of planning law or certainly anything in the Hillsborough Township ordinance that contemplates the applicant's motivation to file the application.
So I understand we can't, we can only question the witness or her testifying, but if the public wants to better understand why a lot line change is requested, how do we do that?
I think I'm being present here because they're, they're stating their-
I think it's a good question for Mr. Ford or civil engineer. If you look at the site, you'll see things like wetlands, the pipeline, forested areas. So it's really an engineering question to a degree, why Mike moved the lot line to the west in other applications. You know, there's people, financing is, is a common concern or a common rationale for, for having a, a paper subdivision, even if it's the same owner. This board has heard multiple, so some of our larger applications for residential housing have different lots based upon different phases, things like that, so.
It also may be within the mind of the applicant who may at some point testify related to why.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we'll have operational testimony from, from the applicant and you can ask the questions, but it's, there, there are reasons and I think it would, it's, it's more properly directed at our, at our professionals and our other witnesses than our planner.
But, okay, one last question, because I am struggling to understand this. So does the lot line change make it a T E C, make it qualified?
No. The latter, and this property is in the T E C D zone, the lot line does not allow it to be developed. Again, the underlying T E C D zone has standards in it for lot coverage, for setbacks, for buffering, that's what the applicant has to be governed by. Of course, the lot line adjustment is going to ultimately facilitate the development of that application with the layout that the applicant has provided. There could be, this is a large piece of property. There are many ways the applicant, the minimum lot area in the T E C D zone is only five acres. So the applicant certainly has the flexibility to come forward with an application. It could be developed in, in a number of different ways. So this is the application, the applicant is choosing to propose this lot line adjustment to facilitate the ultimate development in conjunction with the T E C D standards. It's in the T E C D zone standards, the lot line does not change that. It does not allow it to use different standards. The lot line adjustment simply moves the lot around, moves the lot line around.
Okay. So it could be that by having the lot line change, it could affect the, the intensity that, you know, like how intensely the, the property is developed?
The intensity is governed by the bulk and setback criteria in the T E C D zone. The lot line adjustment does not change that.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, I'm just trying to follow my chain of thought, once again. So, because, you know, the residents are concerned about the, the concept of high intensity. So how, how is that defined?
So I'm not understanding what you mean by high intensity, but allow me to read you from page two of Mr. Maskey's review letter where, under use standards, again, his statements, not my interpretation of them, April 29th, 2022, review letter, page two, use standards. Warehousing, shipping and receiving in offices are listed as permitted uses in the T E C D zone. So when he's talking about the use standards, if there was an issue with the use standards proposed by this application, the applicant wouldn't be properly before the planning board. It would be before a different board. So the use program that's associated with this application is in fact contemplated as indicated in the review letter of, by the T E C D zone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm not sure if this is a proper question for her or, so I'm trying to find out who I would ask, but my understanding, they said no waivers, no whatever with this. My, my understanding of the T E C D zone is that it is supposed to be a very neighborhood-friendly zone for the transition there and that it would contain sidewalks, bike paths and things to facilitate this. Is there any indication, I mean, you said no waivers, so that this is provided in this application and is, because I don't want to miss my opportunity to ask about these.
Yeah, I would point you to the, to the amended site plan applications that, that Mr. Ford had submitted at the end of November. There were alterations and we've added, in accordance with a, a previous variance request, we've removed the variance request and added a tremendous amount of sidewalks to provide circulation, bike racks, bike paths, trees, all kinds of conditions that had previously required variance relief. We eliminated those variances. And so if you take a look at the updated site plan, it, it will detail all of those changes that were necessitated by the board's comments and the applicant's desire to present a variance-free application.
Mr. O'Grady, when Mr. Ford's here, you'll be showing that plan, correct?
Yes, certainly, but it's, it's on Civic Clerk right now if you want to take a look.
And that'll be the time to ask the questions as to those issues.
Okay. And the other time to ask questions with regards to hours of operation or with the trucks being able to go through the neighborhoods and stuff to access this, because when my son drove, I don't drive at night, when my son drove me by the warehouses over off of Weston Canal Road, at 11 o'clock at night, they were going full force with a lot of noise, backup beep beeps and a lot of lighting, a lot of trucks idling with its pollution going there, is, is, which to me, again, does not conform with a T E C D transitional zone. It sounds like more a heavy industrial zone to me. And so have, have there been any things to address this?
Yeah, so Ms. O'Connell, we, I would also point you to Civic Clerk to take a look at the traffic impact study that was prepared by Dolan and Dean. So that'll detail your questions with respect to trip generation. And we will have operational testimony from the applicant's professionals that will detail, you know, things like hours of operation, employees, things like that. And you will be able to cross-examine those witnesses, either fact witnesses or expert witnesses at that time.
And one final question. Is this still a, an application without someone that, that you know that's going to buy, without a tenant?
I, I'm not sure I would characterize it that way, but we-
Actually, this, this isn't what, testimony that was given by Ms. Caphone, so really that's a question for somebody else.
Okay.
Okay? Remember, we're trying to question Ms. Caphone basically on where the lines are. That's it. Nothing about the operations, about the water, about the, the trucks. This is strictly on the lines, okay?
So you testified, and I, I have a question, just trying to understand it, that the lots as they are today are conforming, correct?
Yes.
The lots, when they change, when you change a line, are conforming?
Yes.
So who does it benefit and what is the benefit of changing it?
So it conforms with the ordinance and it allows for the applicant to ultimately develop the property in the way he sees fit to accomplish not only his development on the property, but also to implement the zone standards in the T E C D zoning district.
So who is that benefiting besides the developer? Who is it benefiting?
Well, it's benefiting the township because the township puts ordinances in place and if you have an application that comes before the planning board that conforms in all aspects with regard to use and bulk criteria, then certainly, you know, legislatively, the governing body put into place these zoning ordinances. So to implement the zoning ordinance certainly benefits the community.
So why not we leave the lines where they are and have more reasonable-sized warehouses instead of a warehouse that's the size of nine football fields and the impact that that has on the town?
This is a large piece of property and the applicant has chose to file the application to have the lot line to facilitate the program of development that he is proposing, which conforms with the T E C D zone.
At the benefit of the developer and not the town. Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, we are at 10:30. But the next time we convene, we will continue with Ms. Caphone if there are audience members or anyone from the public that wants to continue cross-examining her. So you will get a bite at the apple. So with that, we need to-
Well, you know, more than anyone else who's been before the board lately, Mr. O'Grady, you're well aware that everything is currently January the 12th, only because for the purposes of the public who has not been here, the board has not yet established its calendar for board meetings of 2023.
Right.
So there is not, the magic of January 12th is to prove that-
Scouting only, Mr. Bernstein?
What?
Yes.
You will probably not need to be-
Thank you.
Therefore, since I assume Mr. O'Grady will be here for multiple applications as to that scheduling issue, for the purposes of the record, this matter is being carried till January the 12th, 2023. The assumption is that there will not be testimony on January 12th, 2023, but we will reschedule the hearing accordingly and we're asking Mr. O'Grady if we can extend until March 31st. There's a mic there, Craig.
I think we can extend to January 31st and then on January 12th, when you announce the new date, if there needs to be.
We now know why Mr. Giannetti was here tonight.
He's the date setter.
For purposes of the record, ladies and gentlemen, and you are more than welcome to come, the board reorganization meeting is at-
7:00.
On the 12th of January. At that point, the board will set its, its calendar. And at 7:30, probably early in the meeting, at 7:30, we will, we will start booking application hearings for those applications which are currently pending, I believe all of which are Mr. O'Grady's at this time.
I think you're going to like the next one.
We have three mamas on for that. Yes, assuming you're ready. We need a motion to carry.
All right. Has there a motion to carry to January 12th next year? With a time of decision to January 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, or can I do all of it?
I'll go to a roll call.
Roll call.
Hey, we still have a meeting to finish up. Come on. Please, Mr. Chickarelli.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, what's your name again? Delkor. Yeah. Mayor LaPani.
Yes.
What?
Miss Smith.
Miss Smith can't choose.
Oh, so there's too many, you don't get to vote on the extension.
There's only one person missing tonight, thank you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian.
Yes.
Chairman Sorachi.
Yes. So before I ask for adjournment, for some of you that may not know, this is Mr. Delkor's end of his term, or his last planning board meeting for now, hopefully.
Maybe.
Maybe, but just in case, just wanted formally and publicly just, you know, thank you for the years and hopefully we can bring you back soon.
Thank you.
So with that, Deputy Mayor Delkor, would you like to make a motion for adjournment?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor? All right. May everyone have great holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.
And see you next week, or next year.